Like on the context and the history of the civic area project. And then, having seen the guiding principles slide, we can go back to that and then talk that through and discuss it. And talk about if they're still relevant, if there's any updates needed, and if they're good to go as they are. The second section then will focus in, like I said earlier, on the design process. And finally, we'll, that section will get into the engagement section, about thirty minutes for each section total. And with that, I'm happy to introduce you to Shiomi Kuriyagawa, who is our senior landscape architect and project manager.
All right, thank you so much, Mark, and so excited to be here. This is a great and wonderful opportunity. A pretty large, complicated project with a lot of moving parts, but we're excited for the opportunity. And so I'll just kick us off with a little bit of project context and locate us for the civic area. Um, here you see in the middle of the slide civic area with Boulder Creek that runs straight through it. We are bound by Canyon to the north and Arapaho Avenue to the south. It stretches from Ninth Street all the way to Fourteenth Street. And you can see that we have major influence and connections on adjacent sites. Activity with Pearl Street at our north. Pearl Street is not in the scope, but it is a key project that will keep top of mind when we look to connecting into downtown. As well as down south by CU campus. So thinking about all of these key adjacent sites. We do have a major connection with the Arboretum Path and opportunity there for multimodal and alternative transit. Up to the CU conference development and connecting the civic area in general. So a little bit of orientation for you all in what project site we're talking about. And all the influence that it will have throughout downtown. So the civic area and the planning background, like what was previously mentioned, this was um, in the decade making with twenty twelve as our kickoff for Boulder's Downtown Civic Area Planning Effort. In twenty thirteen, we adopted a vision plan for civic area. And that included those seven guiding principles that we will ask questions on a little bit later. Um, what we matched in twenty fifteen was a civic area updated concept plans. The concept plan was matched to the seven guiding principles in twenty fifteen to create our full park plan as we know it today. Um, so this concept plan just lays out a flexible framework for us in terms of programming and space. It includes areas of Civic Park, Central Park, connections up to Pearl Street, Thirteenth Street, East Bookend, West Bookend, the Arboretum Connection, and all the major pedestrian connections that are adjacent that run through in and out. So almost like a true heart of Boulder with that connectivity pulsing. In twenty eighteen, the phase one park improvements, um, you see here in the pink boundary. These opened up and are located between the north wing of the library and municipal building. We did a lot of improvements along the creek, a new playground, a plaza outside of the north wing of the library. Uh, graded the lawns back to really receive and gain access to the creek. And so, um, these are some of the improvements that we're going to be building off and tying into for the next phase of work. And so I'm not going to go through these bullet point by bullet point, but we just wanted to mention and included in the memo the link to the civic area plan, the vision, um, for this civic space and park. Uh, again, it's really unifying the space together, creating that civic heart. And creating a space for, uh, community members of all walks of life to engage, gather and connect. The planned purpose really is our guiding of, uh, framework that provides us flexibility in several different, um, modes in terms of financing and, um, change over time as we see more programming. And that is going to be guided by the engagement plan that we'll walk through a little bit later. And then also included in the park plan, the civic area park plan, the guiding principles. So these are the seven principles I mentioned earlier. Um, and just to highlight a few here, no, in no particular priority or order, but, um, the outdoor culture and nature guiding principle, I mean, really that opportunity to have this large green infrastructure asset and revitalizing the creek and bringing access down to, uh, recreation, both with water and, uh, the park. The, uh, park amenity, the celebration of history and asset, so preserving and integrating historic structures. So we have a lot of, uh, historic structures scattered throughout the civic area. We're going to work to integrate them and, uh, move with them into design. And really capture the spirit of the culture that, uh, exists today in the park. And then sustainable and a viable future. So, uh, this really speaks to our S E R framework. It also, uh, speaks to the climate initiatives, uh, strategies that we have with a sustainable future. We want to provide a robust and high performing park that works for the community and services all throughout Boulder. Um, and to get there, we have to make sure we're making wise decisions. And, um, whether that's through climate or funding, uh, that will encompass all of that through that principle. So this is going to be one of the questions on any input from council and we'll get to that in a moment. Once we're done with the section, I think we're almost there, but I did want to note a couple more things. The guiding plans and policies outside of our park plan for the civic area. So of course, the framework that will be guiding design and planning through this process will be, um, Boulder Civic Area Master Plan completed in two thousand and fifteen, as I mentioned before. But we're also going to use, um, Boulder's Engagement Strategic Framework, the Racial Equity Plan, the Sustainable Equity Resilience Framework through the engagement process. So we have a lot of guiding plans and policies that our park plan points out to and also incorporates in a lot of, uh, the goals and vision here. Uh, just another note to, to highlight that we're working closely with the facilities plan. So right now they're reimagining, uh, a government campus. And so we're working with them as maybe some of the programming flexes. This will be something we're tracking very closely with the Facilities Department. Transportation has a lot of projects that are touching in and around the civic area. And we're working with transportation as well on the bus gate expansion and several other projects that come into or around our site. And then a note here on the civic area historic district application. So we wanted to highlight along with the policies that there is a separate project running concurrently. It started, the application was received in May of this year. And, um, council will receive an IP or an information packet on this next week. We are not going to cover, uh, this project here tonight, but we want to let you know that it's on the way and council will look and look forward to more information on the historic district next week. And so with that overview of the history and then the guiding principles, we're already at our first section and comment for council. So again, just a reminder, we can stop here and talk about any, uh, questions regarding the overall context, the history of the planning, um, albeit it was pretty succinct and brief. But, um, any questions also or comments on the guiding principle from the two thousand and fifteen civic area master plan? And just note that this is our guiding framework. And so we just want to do a check here to see if there's any feedback.
Shiomi, before it goes to feedback, I just wanted to alert council members that if you want the slides brought down to answer these questions, your questions are in the chat. Um, so it's up to you. Just wanted to.
Okay, well, we can leave it up there for now. Um, should I take it from here, Nurya?
Absolutely.
Okay, so first section, does council have any questions regarding the context and history of the civic area project and a new council members, you'll see that raise your hand icon below. So you can ask your questions. Any questions? Nicole.
Thank you and thanks, thanks for the presentations. Nice to see you here, Shiomi. Um, my question was just really kind of getting back to the historical context for starting this work. And I understand, you know, the vision and what we were trying to achieve, but my question was a little bit more, um, basic. And what was sort of the, the problem that kicked off this work, right? What was the, um, what was the problem we were trying to solve in, in starting this was did things, uh, was it because of the flood that, you know, we were thinking about how we needed to kind of redo stuff here? What, what was that?
You know, um, a lot of the planning was before my time, but it is to my understanding. And of course, Ally and Mark, you can, um, add on to my, uh, response here. But, uh, really unifying the space and really utilizing the space to its full potential, I would say would be one of the key, um, components of this. So really making sure that we have the fullest extent of a civic area, a collaborative space, a space where everybody is welcome, um, that promotes safety and engagement in, uh, civic space, but also recreation as well. Um, so I'll just, Ally, if you have anything else to add to that.
That's actually there. I would say there were three key prongs to the impetus in twenty twelve and what Shiomi mentioned is one. The second is that as a result of Parks and Recreation Asset Management, um, and with the Prab in, in those years, we identified it the biggest areas of deficiencies and needs. And this park is one, it is one of the oldest parks that has a lot of, um, dated amenities. It's tired, it's, it's time to refresh it, especially given the heavy use it gets through events, through visitation. And then, of course, the opportunities to drive economic vitality. And then that third piece is just the city building opportunity and in urban planning with the bookends.
Anything else, Nicole?
Thank you. Um, I do have one question that relates to the second one. Do you want me to wait on that one? Or just ask it now?
Just ask it.
Okay, um, one of the
Oh, wait, the second que, no, we're not up to that.
But the second question here about the, any comments on guiding principles?
Yeah, let's wait, let, let me get, uh, the questions for the first question. All right, Mark.
Uh, yeah, just, um, uh, one quick question on the, the application for the designation of the landmark district, uh, at least temporarily is subsequent to all of these other plans and, and, and studies. Without getting too deep in the weeds on this, uh, do you think there's anything inconsistent between our other objectives and the objectives of this designation?
I would say at this moment, uh, we don't, we don't know one way or the other. Um, it's definitely been a project led by P and D S. And so they're doing their due diligence, um, and research and, uh, exploring the full district application and doing a lot of great background work on, on the project. And Kathleen, if you had anything else to add to that, let me know.
Actually, let's, uh, I'm gonna call on, I know, um, Brad Mueller has been heavily involved and he's the P and D S teammate who's available to chime in on that one.
Yeah, thank you both. Good evening, Council. Brad Mueller, Director of Planning and Development Services. Um, ob- obviously, we want to be careful about getting too far into something that ultimately is quasi judicial. But we do recognize that there's a relationship between the, um, designation, should it happen? And then importantly, the design standards that would then be, uh, adopted as they would be for, for any historic district. And, uh, that really gets into the interplay of the built environment and such. And we have engaged as part of the outreach process in processing the historic district application. All of the various departments. So we do have, uh, a good situational awareness between, uh, partners and our, and, uh, various interests within the, within the various city departments. Did that answer your question, uh, council member?
Sort of. Um, I'll have to think a little bit more about that question and maybe come back to you later.
Okay, any more questions? If not, we're going to move on. Does council have any comments or questions on the guiding principles from the two thousand and fifteen civic area plan as a guiding framework for the next phase of design? Questions and comments? Ryan.
There, thanks. I, I had my hand up, um, right at the end there. So I actually had something on the previous question, if that's okay. Okay, um, thanks, Shiomi. Uh, I, a couple of questions, actually. Um, the first one, if it's not too much trouble, can you show this, the first slide that had the map with the, the purple and green?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I don't know if this is the right one.
Hopefully I didn't complicate it. The one before that, right before that.
One before, great.
Thank you. So I was trying to make sense of the colors. I don't see a key, and forgive me if I should know this, but what is, did the purple and green mean anything? And the, the width of the arrow and that arrow is?
Yes, we didn't put a key on this zoomed out plan, but, uh, we just wanted to highlight key adjacencies that will be taking in our design and, um, key connections as well. So the purple are some recent sites and green arrows indicate a lot of the corridors and connections that will be influencing the civic area. And not only in, but civic area influencing out.
Okay, thank you. Um, my, my other question, it's kind of similar to Nicole's, uh, question about the goals or the, the, the problem statement. Um, can I try, maybe ask a little bit differently? If, if we didn't do anything, if we just said, you know what, we're staff's pretty busy, this is expensive. If we didn't do anything, not knowing what we know now, what, what would we lose? Or why, why, why not, why should we not do anything?
I think I'll let Ally, uh, take this.
Yeah, that feels like a softball for the, the parks girl, right? So epidemic of loneliness, we know that nature and getting people moving and getting connecting are more important than ever. Um, the civic area and the park at the core, it's the largest swath of public land and the densest parts of Boulder. And so that connection to nature, to people, um, is so important. It's not working right now, right? We don't see, we know there's limitations to the way events can happen. Um, limitations to the way people gather in the space. And it is one of our largest areas of maintenance costs and vandalism. When a park is thriving, when there is positive activity, those maintenance costs go down. And economic vitality goes up, investment in the other areas, all of these things are really important. They were important in twenty twelve, and I think they're more important today.
Great, thanks. Okay. And then if I could ask one more question and that's it. Um, and this, not to put you on the spot, so feel free to punt this, but I'm, I'm curious about the transportation context and, um, a- any traffic studies we've done, for example, vehicle counts, um, along canyon. And I'm, I'm interested, I'll just say a part in humanizing canyon more, which is, is part of this as well. So, um, not to put you on the spot if you don't have that, but, um, that's a question I either have now or will in the future when, when you have that. So yeah, anything you'd say on, on park, uh, traffic counts you've done or other tracks?
Well, actually, um, so in previous studies, now those are a few years, um, like going into this next phase, we do have a traffic study included in the planning and analysis for the next phase of design. We will definitely, um, be looking at some of our traffic conditions around the site through the site. Um, we're doing a parking and access study. So all of that will come together in the planning process. Um, and we, we can look forward to seeing how that all is shaping out and influencing design.
Okay, thanks, Shoney. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I'm sorry, I was on mute, of course. I had one job. Taisha.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Uh, Councilwoman Weiner, um, I had questions about the, well, one, thank you for the plan. Thank you for the thoroughness of the background information. It always makes it very, very useful and helpful. So I'm just really grateful for that. Um, as far as the guiding principles are concerned, um, I just wanted to clarify, is the question, um, that we're being asked is whether or not we want to make updates to these principles or just our feedback to the principles? I just wanted to get that again, just one more time.
Uh, I would say both. So this is our guiding framework from the master plan. And this is what we're going to take forward, yes, from the two thousand and fifteen master plan. And so this is what we're going to take forward, um, to really help guide design. And we just want to make sure that everything you see here, this is, uh, this is all encompassing. Or if there's any changes that you might have or feedback to add on.
Okay, wonderful. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. So in that case, um, the civic heart of Boulder, um, well, one thing that's missing from these principles that I think, um, were not as prominent as they are now is around inclusion and welcoming. And so I don't see a huge lift. I see it as the civic heart of Boulder. Um, might I recommend just creating a innovative or inclusive and welcoming city center or something? But just, again, it's not enough to say that it's connected to a racial equity framework. The principles that we have need to be reflected in this document. So that was one, um, uh, gap that I saw in these principles. And then, um, just another, um, component just around, um, the amount of different plans that this, um, this particular framework is connected to. So I ran into this issue a lot at Colorado Parks and Wildlife where there were significant amounts of plans. And one of the things that, um, staff helped us to do was to crosswalk those plans and be specific about the actual section that is related to this. So seeing a whole list, right, but really being clear, because it's, it's impossible to hold us ourselves and have the public hold us accountable if we're not very clear, um, on what the framework is. And having a framework of frameworks is, um, is complicated and messy. So, uh, just would love to see more clarification around the specific alignments. And of course, then, uh, how, uh, recommendations on how we can ensure accountability across the board. Thank you.
Absolutely. That's great. And, uh, feedback that we're looking for, uh, in these guiding principles. So thank you so much for that.
Okay, Mark.
All right, um, I, I guess, um, one of my concerns, I, I think it's sort of the elephant in the room. We have a, a lovely Boulder Creek path today. Uh, and unfortunately, many people feel reluctant to use it for a variety of reasons, mostly relating um, to their safety. Um, and while I think the, the refurbishment of that pathway is a, is a wonderful idea, uh, I don't know uh, if, if in twenty fifteen, we were, um, experiencing the same issues that we're experiencing today. Um, and I, I think whatever we do there, and I don't see any of this in, in the guiding principles, we're going to have to create a space that is, uh, accessible, um, not just refurbished, but it, but something that people will want to use. but, but something that people will want to use. Otherwise, the money we use there will be ill spent and we should use it somewhere else. And I, I don't know what the answer to that is. It's, you know, it's nobody's fault that we have this issue. But we do. And having people not want to use what we've got and then spending money to refurbish it and have them not want to use something more expensive and new does not make a lot of sense to me, you know, from a fiscal point of view. So I think you're going to need to address that aspect of things as you design. The nice thing about being a member of councils, I can say, fine, you figure it out, but it, it is a problem and I think it's, it's going to need to be addressed. Otherwise, you know, we're going to spend money on something that, that's, that's not going to be very productive. And again, easy enough for me to say, hard enough to figure out what the answer is. But I, I, I think you need to be aware of, of that issue. Other than that, I also support Taisha's comments in terms of the, of the principles. And I'm, you know, you know, hoping we can, we can move forward and, and do this in a productive kind of way.
Perfect, yes. And I agree, we have safety as one of our top priorities for sure. Through the Boulder Creek path and honestly throughout multiple of the spaces of civic area arboretum path included. I'll hand it off to Ally to talk about all of the work that we're incorporating as we go through with planning. And really be thoughtful about some of these spaces with through space activation and other, other key elements that we're looking at. But yes, it's at the top of our priority list as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think she homie addressed it. All that I think is important to add is that the symptoms of homelessness were. It did exist in the park during this plan's development and it is contemplated throughout ways to make the park safe and welcoming for all. And that does include people of all socioeconomic backgrounds and housing statuses. What, what is different about this plan era? One, how we're going to engage. So we, with the 2022 Parks and Recreation Plan, folks who were on council then may remember that we did target engagement around safety in the park. And we included members of the unhoused community. And we found that our community members housed and not shared values for public spaces and how they want to feel in them. We're going to build on that with this park planning project and talk about behaviors and value and, and building on those values. And again, we're include engagement with folks in the unhoused community to talk about behaviors in parks and what makes everybody feel safe and welcome. The other thing that is being included in this planning project is huge is what happens after you cut the ribbon? What is the activation plan? What is the operation plan? I talked earlier about thriving parks and positive activity and how they contribute to safety. That's a key part of this project that we'll have to figure out. You're right, we don't have the answers right now, but the way this team is planning it for what happens after opening day is really exciting.
Thank you.
Nicole.
Thank you. I will just start, just a plus one to Councilwoman Adams' comment about uplifting inclusion. I think especially after having seen the awesome storyboard that was put together about the history of this area. It seems like a, uh, one that we've, has historically had a lot of exclusion. And so how are we kind of going above and beyond to ameliorate some of what, what has happened in the past and, and some would say currently in the present too, in this area. And then also just plus one to Councilman Wallick's comments about resource allocation. And you know, how are we making sure that if we're spending a lot of money here, it's an area that people will, you know, be comfortable using and, you know, to is, is there a balance between investing in some, you know, services that may help people who are living unsheltered in these areas? Versus just kind of doing straight updates. So just, just want to elevate both of those. Then the other thing that I would like to add in bringing up is around something around climate risk and adaptability in this area. And I know we talked about flood and fire mitigation, and I know that that's part of this work. But more thinking about in a, in a warmer, drier climate, what does that mean for, for this area? Because it is a relatively large area with more kind of green spaces. How are we sort of adapting? And I was a little bit surprised to not see climate initiatives listed in the, the memo. Who the memo was from and, and just curious about hearing a little bit more about that involvement, not just from a flood and fire risk mitigation perspective, but really thinking about adapting these ecosystems and making them resilient as we're moving into a warmer and drier climate.
Okay, that's great. Do you want to answer that? Because I'm just going to shout out here that we have five minutes left in this section. We can push it another five minutes because I see that Mayor Brackett still hasn't spoken and I still haven't spoken. And I see Ryan wants to double tip, which we could talk about.
I can, I can make it really quick on the climate initiative. So we might have dropped the climate initiatives from the memo. We did include climate initiative strategy in our key values, in our RFP out to our design consultants, really looking for that innovative design team who will help us think about low water use and drought tolerant plant species and water quality before it hits Boulder Creek and multiple of these kind of components that will create this climate resilient space. And so we are weaving in a lot through, as Taisha mentioned, a lot of the policies. And so we can do a little bit more due diligence on that, as she mentioned, crosswalking and showing later on in the process, during planning, through design, how we're hitting all of these goals for sure. Thank you for that.
May I just offer a reflection back to that, Tara?
If you have one, yeah, for one minute.
Super fast. Basically that also really thinking about what, what we are going to be needing in that and, you know, having more shade, for example. You know, natural cooling, those, those kinds of things too. And especially as we're thinking about air quality. Wildfire smoke, that sort of thing. How are we in the process of especially this area? Thinking about keeping people safe when, you know, we've got all these different kind of threats that are out there. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And we will get plenty of opportunities to speak more into this, everyone. It's not your only time. Don't worry. Mayor Brock.
Thanks, Tara. And apologies, everyone, if I just used first names. I'm an informal kind of a person.
Awesome. Aaron, your turn.
So these are, these are some great points. And specifically to the guiding principles, I just want to, to also plus one a couple of change suggestions that were given. I think in 2015, we were not thinking about inclusion as much or in the same way as we are now. And also resilience as well. I think that topic was not being addressed in the same way that, that we're thinking about it now. So I, thanks, Taisha and Nicole for bringing those up. I think those are both great ideas. And, and, and Mark, thanks for asking the question about safety. And Ally, I'm really glad to hear that we're thinking about the safety of all as we move forward with this. And then, so just, and then a question I'll just put out for staff is once we're finished with our comments, just whether you've gotten clarity about maybe some alterations to make or if we get some straw pulling, just maybe we can check back in with you once the comments are done. Thank you.
Brian, is it okay if I go next? You're right. Okay. So I have three questions. The first question is about the arboretum, which I've been basically talking about for two years. So I'm excited we're bringing it up. And that is, is the arboretum, I know the arboretum path is a part of this, is the actual arboretum a part of this?
Yes, this connection will be a part of what we're studying for civic area.
Okay, great. So I was, I was told two, two years ago, a constituent wrote to me and said, hey, what are we going to do about the arboretum? Of course, I said, what arboretum? I didn't even know we had one. But we do. And I'm wondering, are we going to discuss plants to upgrade? I'm concerned about the trees there. I know the bark has been coming off and it could definitely use some love. So is that being considered?
Yes, that'll all be analyzed through the planning and analysis task. And we are running also forestry has been doing an inventory and conditions assessment up there. And so we have a lot of love to give in that area. It, it just needs a lot and we'll be working on it through planning, analysis and schematic design.
That's great news. And next I want to, I agree with Ryan about bringing up the Canyon, Canyon Boulevard. Can you, I don't know if you said this to him and I missed it, but is the redesign of Canyon involved in this? Or are we not going to be doing that in the, in the near future?
There are some transportation upgrades that are along Canyon around the civic area. And then in the parks plan, we do have an upgrade for a more pedestrian friendly connectivity. Let me spine along Canyon Boulevard. And then there will be some crossings, I believe at 13th and Canyon, if I'm not mistaken, that we'll be looking at as well. So there are a few elements of Canyon that we will be looking at in this process.
Great. And then last question is about the ban shell. And let me know if I'm speaking about anything that is quasi judicial. So right now, the ban shell has, uh, that area has the most amount of drug fatalities, overdoses and buying and selling of drugs as well. So is there a plan to do something about that? And is there a plan to move the ban shell? I read in our packet that there was quite a lot of discussion about that.
Yeah, so I know that our 2015 master plan does show the ban shell in a different location. The ban shell is historically designated, it's existing today. The landscape is historically designated or directly around the ban shell. We are not moving the ban shell. So we are not going to do that. And the area of the other question that you mentioned about going back to really safety and space activation and making sure that there are social behaviors, everybody's welcome, everybody feels safe. That goes back to the discussion about Boulder Creek. It includes this area. We'll be working through the planning process to think about space activation and multiple ways to look at this area.
Great, thank you. Okay, we have Ryan and then we have Lauren. And we probably have like, no rush, Ryan, but we don't have that many, much more time left.
Okay, I just had something on guiding principles. I was, I was trying to follow the summer too. So just first, I'd like to agree with whatever Councilmember Adams at here. But then on the guiding principles, the enhanced access and connections one. So this is the, the transportation one. I, my feedback is I think it's a, it's a little milquetoast. I would like to see written a little more strongly to suggest that we are going to use this, this opportunity to enhance the experience of transit and, and pedestrian and bikeways for travel. So we're going, we're going to enhance on what we currently have, not just continue. You know, we, we currently have a multimodal system. And also I'm not sure what's meant by utilizing parking structures. But that, that gives me an idea of like driving more cars to the space, which I, I wouldn't, I don't think we should be implying. So I would hope that this project is about creating a more walkable urban core that, that gives people a greater chance to, to be car light and to reduce vehicle miles traveled in the city, which is consistent with first goals that we have. So ideally, that would be, that would more be, come out more strongly here. Thanks.
Great. And I'll just add quickly to that. I know we're getting close on time here. But absolutely heard on making sure the alternative transit and transit in general connections, connectability is stronger in here. We have a wonderful opportunity with the arboretum path. And so looking forward to diving more into those studies. And again, more traffic and parking and access studies throughout this area. So.
Great, thank you, Shoney. And Lauren.
Thank you, Tara. I was just wondering about sort of if the boundary that is shown here for the civic area is expected to be treated sort of as a hard and fast boundary. I know that in prior studies, you know, this high, this image highlights the plaza over by the St. Julian, but that's not always highlighted in the documents that we have. So I just kind of wanted to encourage a little bit of flexibility with what we include in this, you know, if we hear from community that something adjacent should really be considered as part of that. I hope we will do so.
Yes, and actually that would be a really good segue into our next section of scope that we can talk to, if that's okay with everybody and Councilwoman Weiner.
Well, I just have one. Lauren, are you done?
Yes, for now.
Okay, so I just have to ask quickly if that's okay. A few people haven't spoken yet. And I just wanted to make sure that was your opportunity for this particular section. You can quickly raise your hand if you want to. Going once, twice and moving on. Okay, Shoney.
Great.
Oh, wait, Teresa.
Hi there. I see that we have a, a question in the chat from Taisha. And I wanted to see if we could ask that publicly because the chat is hard to access publicly. And so we try to, we try to conduct all the business verbally.
Yes, I'm happy to do that. But actually, I realized after I put it in there that it's for the next set of questions. So I can wait. Thank you so much.
All right, let's move on then and get into scope, talking about that, uh, what the area is that we're actually looking at. So for the next phase of design for civic area, you can see highlighted here and in gray the area where we have phase one improvements. But everything in the blue, including this arboretum path, all the way up to the north side of CU will be in scope in the planning phase. We'll be taking a deep dive in gaining technical analysis as well as through engagement on we have a park improvements. How is it working for you? Tell us what's working, tell us what's not. So that'll be a part of the engagement process. But really what you see here is the overall scope, again in purple. It's not in scope, but these connections will definitely be included and top of mind as we go through design. So looking to the Boulder Creek that runs through the main campus, the west and book, excuse me, the west and east bookends, 13th Street, we will come over Broadway, but it'll include the municipal building, Park Central and New Britain, as well as the land around the library. The library will be its own district now, so the library is excluded, but we will be working with them as a primary stakeholder. So this is the general area of the scope. And again, as we get through the planning process and we go through schematic design, some of that may be flexible as we discover anything from our studies that might need to be included or not. So that's what I would want to highlight here. That's included in the next phase of planning. And the major components of this scope will be a park at the core, meaning there's going to be a lot of park improvements and park design that we're looking at in schematic design, as well as 13th Street and the arboretum connection will be included in schematic design. And so schematic design will just help us dig down into a deeper level of design. And so that will be looking at materiality and a lot of more of the detail to help us cost and price what these enhancements will really be and really take to get constructed. The west and the east bookends in pink that you see here will be a land use analysis. And so I'll go over, there's going to be a two-pronged process here between schematic design and land use. And those will be separated in, on their two different timelines. But just a note on the level of design that we'll take throughout the spaces and the three key spaces that you see here. So in the project process, this is really just the summary of the process that I outlined for the scope that you see. But just to note, everything graded back on the top, initial planning, vision plan, all of that is where we have been. In purple is where we are today with the second phase of what we're looking at. The book ends again in 2024 will be that land use analysis, uh, land use analysis, excuse me. And in decision making there, there may be some rezoning recommendations that we're looking at in 2025. So that's the first track that I talked about with the land use. The second tract is an analysis with the park at the core and the arboretum. So in 2024, we'll be doing that technical study of those areas. We'll dig down and get into design in 2025 for schematic design. And then decision making here, we'll be looking at, after that costing, really what will be the phase two construction limit of work? And that is sort of all predicated on the funding that we have for the project. So that's the two-pronged process here and where our roadmap is taking us into the future over the next couple of years. And then I just wanted to highlight our staff coordination. So again, it's multi-departmental. There is a lot of moving parts. We want to ensure that we're coming up with a unified approach for this area. So it includes the core team from Parks and Recreation's Comprehensive Planning, Transportation and Mobility Utilities Facilities and the Community Vitality Department. These are not the only departments. So we will be supported by an extended team as well as subject matter experts. So through forestry and water resources and the, and other departments, the police department will be supporting us. So we're going to be reaching out to the subject matter experts and our extended team as well. What will oversee this whole team really in this coordination is our downtown coordination team. So there's a larger effort here. So there's a larger effort here to coordinate all of the projects downtown, and that's led by our planning and development group. And so they will ensure that we're playing nice with each other, that we're all coordinated, and especially with engagement. So the engagement, there'll be opportunity to sort of collaborate within the projects and across the projects for engagement. So the downtown coordination team will be helping us and guiding us through that. And of course, this is under a lot of review and touch points through the executive sponsor team, which includes the city manager's office and the director executive team. And of course, guiding us through design, we are in contracting now, we're really excited to soon announce that our partnership with the design team. So this design consultant, we're excited to get to work with, and they'll guide us through some innovation and some great alternatives for these spaces. I just wanted to highlight our decision making process, and this is sort of all encompassing too, to think about the sustainable sustainability equity and resilience framework. We're going to take the community engagement that I'll speak about later, the research that we do with the technical studies and the existing policy. We're going to take all of that and we'll come up with a plan that definitely is reflective of community input, but also has a lot of process involvement and engagement at different levels with multiple boards. Now, I know this graphic is pretty small and listing off the boards, we do have a list further down that's easier to read. But including council, we will be coming back to Pratt Landmark Planning, Transportation, Water Resources, Environmental Boards, Downtown Management Commission, Design Advisory Boards, Human Relations Commissions, and the Art Commissions. So we have a lot of work to do, a lot of coordination, and a lot of collaboration to get this unified approach. But council will be in those periods as well, all throughout the process. And then council is shown at the very end approving the final schematic design as well as those land use recommendations. And then hopefully, we get to a great and successful park opening. And I believe Mark and Ally mentioned after that, it'll be also about what happens after ribbon cutting and how we activate space. So it doesn't just end there. The schedule for the project, I'll go through just an overview of this and just note that we'll get into more detail with engagement. But we're here at the end of 2013 with scoping and project management about to kick off and launch into planning analysis in 2024. 2024 again will include that land use study as well. Schematic design will come in 2025, 2026, we'll get into a detailed level of design and get really serious about thinking about construction at the end of 2026 and 2027. So you'll notice that below the maintenance and safety programs as well as the space activation that will overlay over some of those tasks and will really start to think about those components through design. And then I just want to note too, you can see again at a high level how the engagement windows overlay through planning analysis. And then again, at schematic design, so we'll have some great engagement to go through some schematic design alternatives with the community as well as council and the multiple boards, and then finalizing engagement window four with a preferred plan. Engagement window five will take us to construction with construction updates throughout how we progress, and then getting to that park opening and engagement window six. And then just to note, we have but budget allocated throughout the year. So 2024, you can see throughout 500K, 2 million in 2025, 2026, 10 million in 2027, the five point, 5.5 million. And that total is the 18 million planned for design of civic area in just this phase two.
She homie, one point I'll add there before we get to questions is that is not enough to develop every area that is included in the scope. So it's really important to say out loud now, both for members of council, but for members of our community listening, that that we will not be, when we get to that decision point outlined, we will not be going to construction documents for everything within scope. There is not enough funding. Part of our work will be identifying other funding potentials such as grants and other stakeholders or partners through their development. But right now, the limit of work will be limited by this currently planned funding.
Thank you for that, Ally. And I think with that, that wraps up the full scope, the schedule and the process of design. And so we'll come to our questions.
Okay, does council have any questions or comments around the design process, scope and schedule for this project? Lauren.
Thanks. One of my biggest questions is around sort of timing on flood mitigation and land use. I noticed that we were talking about, or in the packet, I think it mentioned that the flood mitigation study being done in 2025 and us looking at making some land use decisions in 2024. And to me, those things seem like they would have a major impact on each other. And so I was hoping maybe you could speak a little bit more to how we're planning to look at flood modeling and flood mitigation in combination with changes in programming, particularly of the bookends.
Absolutely. So, Joe, feel free to jump in, but I'll just say we do have included in our scope flood modeling throughout the process. So we are working within our high hazard zone. We take that pretty seriously. And so as we make these different options and different alternatives throughout the design, we will have a modeler on board to help us figure out the best use for the land and activities and programming, appropriate use, where we can put structures, where not appropriate, and absolutely working within our flood plain and high hazard mitigation policies.
So it sounds like there'll be a little bit more sort of real time back and forth on that.
Correct.
Good. I was also curious about the activation space study. I know that you're going to talk about programming more later, but I was wondering about if that's going to take into account sort of the use or lack of use of the city owned properties. To me, it seems like the use of storage space and office kind of around particularly the east bookend is pretty harmful for the street level activation. And if we're looking at changing that or or thinking about those changes in coordination with the changes in the park.
Yeah, absolutely. So along with design, that land use study was mentioned in the planning analysis and we'll be looking at land use and then coupling that with a market study as well. And so those two things will help tell us, you know, best use and activation. And definitely thinking about the east bookend and throughout how that ties into the park and also the west bookend. Joanna from Facilities Two is online, and Joanna, I don't know if you have anything to add about that in terms of any of the facilities and assets on East Bookend. Great.
That was it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So is she going to talk, is Joanna going to talk or we move on?
I think we're good.
All right, good. Okay, Matt, you're next.
Thanks, Tara. First, first, thanks for what is, I think, really rich information from what from from for us to base a lot of this on. So I'm first off, just I'm kind of excited with where we're going, although it is a lot. So this is good that we take it in bites. The question I have is kind of centered around our partners. And I know in the document, it talks about our partners being Boulder High and CU. But with regards to design, it's pretty clear that anything we do from the Arboretum or for the hill, for that matter, is going to be very adjacent, if not directly needing to utilize some of the west end of the field network of of BBSD. And I'm hope, and I'm just hoping that in an engagement process, as we talk, I know we're going to get that, but it's also part of design. Is that how are we, let me back up, we did a really good job of bringing ourselves together between BBSD and the and and the city with the modular construction out over on Rappahoe. We took a couple steps backwards in our relationship with with New Vista in terms of how we are working together. They sort of made plans and we were notified kind of at the at 11:59 PM. I'm hoping this project can reset some of that and get us where we're working on the same footing. Because I can imagine any infrastructure we're looking to do from the Arboretum down is going to require them not just to be a partner, but to be an integral part of a shared space and a shared ecosystem. So I just want to make sure that we're not equally doing performative stuff with those other jurisdictional entities, but really bringing CU and BBSD in at the ground floor for how we make that connectivity maximize its opportunity to do best for all three of our communities. So I just want to make sure that in design, we're setting ourselves up to give us the greatest suite of options with how we utilize each other's shared spaces that we each have our jurisdictions over, such as something I just want to like primer. But a couple of questions I have is how are we going to think about, and this maybe relates a little bit to Ryan, is we really can't think about that connection through the Arboretum and ultimately the hill? Because ultimately, this is connecting the hill and the business district and using our parks to be this nexus, this web to connect everything. How are we building this transit corridor along Broadway and making sure that we're creating those designs that maximize that in terms of bus stops or shuttle stops or having a bridge dump out on 13th? I mean, whatever those things are, how do we make sure that we're peripherally future-proofing ourselves with the design here so that when those things are known, we're not undoing the work we just did to incorporate those new design features?
Yeah, it's a good question. And Brad and Natalie, please jump in if you if you feel the need. But it is a lot of moving parts, especially up to connect on the hill and thinking about CU and the new development, getting down to downtown safely. And so we are again, working with transportation pretty closely. This Broadway corridor is definitely a one that is going to be key as well as our connection to CU and BBSD. And so it is top of mind, and we are going to be working very closely with all three partners as well as our transportation and planning department on this issue.
Appreciate that. My my last question centers on 13th.
Great.
I didn't know if they were going to answer that or not, so I didn't know if you were teeing that up. But but I get where you're going, and it's a beast. It's 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 the taking bites of an elephant. I appreciate that. My next question is around 13th. And I see that 13th is both in the sort of green in terms of where we're going to have these revisions and then the east bookend. And that those are sort of going to obviously, as Ally mentioned, by a sort by a fact of, you know, funding scarcity be be done in different phases. My only concern is that 13th is is so critical and artery of that connectivity. I worry that one side of the street gets done and the other remains dilapidated for some period of time. And that they're not, it's not that 13th being such a critical artery of connecting the hill to downtown should be done maybe holistically. So I'm a I'm a little worried about them not being that that both sides of 13th not being done simultaneously with a singular vision. And I say that because of what we're going to learn from our social streets debrief. Even though the events weren't very successful, the information we got from the public was exceptionally clear that they want these social streets and that and and it's like no ifs, ands, or buts. So I just want to make sure we're not fragmenting that design and thus the implementation on what is going to be a fundamental causeway of people getting in and out of that downtown corridor.
Ooh, and I think I would agree with you there on fragmenting 13th Street. We definitely want to look at it holistically. We are working with, we were working with Boulder Social Streets. We were integral into their process and tagged along and actually learned a lot through their community engagement and will take a lot of their community engagement thus that they did a lot of their contacts and stakeholders. And we'll move that same group through to civic area. They did a lot of study in event coordination and event, the festival street idea. And so we'll add on to that, I think, with place making and kind of marry the two. But we absolutely think that to look at 13th Street holistically will be key.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And now we have Tina.
Hi, thanks for the great presentation. And for a new council member, it's helpful to have all this information. So thanks for being thorough. I have just a couple of comments, and they're a little bit similar to Matt's about engagement with some of our partners. With respect to the library, which I realize we're now calling the South Library, understanding how removing the parking there could make it more difficult to access for people with mobility issues. And just as we go through this process, I'd like to understand through our partnership work with the library district, how are people going to be able to continue to access the library and make sure that the inside of the library also remains activated? Because it has seen such a drop off in use in the last year and, you know, recovering from the pandemic. And I'm a heavy library user, I'm there a lot. So I want to make sure that we can continue making that building accessible with whatever changes we make. The other piece is thinking about Boulder High School in terms of how the 2,000 plus students that attend there can really be an asset to activating space in the sort of the eight through 3:30 time, Monday through Friday. And there's a lack of field space in the city. So some of these larger fields that we see in the proposed civic area, granted, it'll be in many years, could be a nice extension of the activities for the students there. And I know we have a great partner in growing up Boulder. And then the last comment I'll make is just thinking about where activation is successful now in Boulder and where we're seeing open spaces that are unstructured, being heavily utilized. And I think a lot about North Boulder Park that has a very active outdoor volleyball league. I think about Evan G Fine, which is always active on the weekends. And how, what can we learn from why some of these spaces are so much more active than this space here? Which seems pretty obvious that it should be a really active space, but it doesn't seem to be. And and just bringing forth those learnings into this process. So that's, those are just some of my comments. Thanks.
Yeah, and I'll just respond hopefully in order and let me know if I miss anything. But with the library, we definitely will have the library as a key partner and stakeholder going forward, especially in design, especially as it relates to any of that parking and access study that I mentioned before that we'll be doing. We are not going to be removing parking and parking counts. So we just wanted to make that clear, but we will study all of this going forward in planning and analysis. Certainly, it is, you know, a key thing to push forward alternative transit, but we have to do it mindfully and really per our needs of the community. The other thing I'd like to know, I love what you said about taking lessons learned from across our park systems. I think it's okay, Mark, let me know to bring up here our recreation study that we'll be doing across the system and really gaining key insight on the activation of parks, what kind of uses are being are out there today throughout our systems. And then we'll definitely cross collaborate within the park system and share the data and lessons learned on that. And that will go for civic area too. So we're definitely coordinating across the system in parks. And I think there was one other note there. Ah, yes, and we are going to be working with Growing Up Boulder too. As we move through engagement, there's definitely going to be a large use component. That is one of the goals in our BPR plan and systems plan is to elevate youth voices as part of that diverse and broad range of voices that we'll be hearing from in engagement.
Thank you, Shomi. Okay, it looks like Aaron is next.
I've got a technical question, which is, so a lot of these areas are in the flood plain. Do we know, is it possible to build underground parking in like in the west and east bookends if they're properly flood proofed? Or is that just off the table?
I actually am not, I'm not up to date on that answer. Sir, can anybody help me with that?
Brad Mueller, Planning Director, are you available?
Brad Mueller, Planning Director is available, but unsure himself. So my first instinct is it likely is not possible. Joe, I know you've been in some of those discussions as well. At a minimum, it would be very expensive. But we will get you a better answer in follow.
And if you, I'm seeing all kinds of people pop up, but if you want to get back to me on that, that's not an urgent question.
Okay.
But interested in knowing that. And then Shomi, by the way, thank you for these excellent presentations. It's extremely well done. And as somebody who's been through a lot of these steps, this is great encapsulation of where we've been and where we need to go going forward. I wanted to ask, when you're just, Tina had great questions about accessibility in the library and such. But did I hear you? I thought I might have heard you say there's no parking will be removed. Did I miss miss hear that?
No parking will be removed in this phase. We are not looking to remove parking at this time. We have to go through this access and parking and transit study first and just, yeah, and get a better picture of really what is the best step forward.
That makes sense. So like in the next few months, no parking is going away. Absolutely. But when we do the full studies, we might consider shifting some of the parking into structures or, you know, so some, some kind of parking changes are on the the plate, though, potentially for the whole process.
Potentially for the Potentially for the whole process. And just to note that the master plan is a visionary plan as well, and it really looks out several years into the future.
Okay, great. Thanks for clarifying. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin and Taisha.
Thank you. So a couple of things. One, just want to echo concerns about the library access and so really grateful to know that that's under consideration, the 13th Street continuum and flood alignment and resiliency. And just in general, was curious if, if it would be possible to get a list of current and again, this I know that we need three to get a thing. It may already exist and as I'm onboarding, but just a current list of the capital projects that are happening in the city is just, you know, it would be great to see how this lays in context with the other capital projects that we have coming up along the Pike. So that was just kind of one orienting document that would be helpful. But as far as questions specific to the design, there are a number of indicators, measures and metrics mentioned throughout this document. I was curious if there was a comprehensive evaluation plan that brings all these pieces together into one document inclusive of a spreadsheet that allows for a high level review to ensure transparency and accountability. In addition, curious to make sure that the correlating frameworks that are mentioned, if there are measures and metrics there that are appropriate and applicable to this project, if they would also be included. So that's one. I just wanted to echo again, this arboretum piece, because I ride that bike path down and it is super, super tight right now. Super, super tight right now. So I just, again, am excited to hear more about how that piece and again to Councilman Benjamin's comments around that field right there. And so my question is actually in addition to cooperation around space, if there are, I didn't see them listed as one of the partners as far as opportunities to actually contribute and collaborate. You know, we have a world renowned learning institution in our own backyard. And so although it's wonderful to have all these contractors coming from other places, I always want to ensure that there are opportunities locally around these types of, these kinds of projects. So we want to make sure. And I think that was all of my questions. Thank you.
And Kathleen, I think, can you speak to our overlapping plans and recommendations?
Sure. Hi. Yes. And so Kathleen King, great to see you all. I'm a city planner and PNDS. We do have a team that's really focused right now on looking at all of those overlapping plans, guidelines, regulations and determining which of those kind of fall in the, how they fall in the hierarchy of what's permitted, not permitted, where are there conflicts? So it's an ongoing study right now. But we are building out a map that will kind of demonstrate what those different components are and how they will influence each other. So that'll be available in the next couple of months.
And then as we go through, I, I'm not sure if I'm going to quite hit the question or concern, but as we go through engagement, we definitely track with our equity plan and instrument, we will definitely be tracking what kind of diversity that we are outreach to. We're going to work with a number of programs to help us reach out to a strategy and targeted group per program to make sure that again, we get that broad voice of engagement. And then we're going to track through metrics as we go. And we always have to, as we look through our data from engagement, we want to make sure that we're coding it and quantifying it accurately so that we get the best picture possible as we go through that process. So I, I hope that answered that.
No, but thank you so much. I actually have a whole set of other questions for engagement. This is specifically around all the measures and metrics that were indicated, the qualitative measures that were indicated and just seeing again, a comprehensive evaluation plan. So it would say parts of evaluation plans throughout the document. But I was curious if there was actually an evaluation plan that has all of those components in addition to the measures and metrics that were identified. Thank you.
No, I don't believe so, but I do love, and actually one that we should be working toward in this next phase of design.
Lauren, wait, Taisha, are you done? I'm sorry. You're not done or you are done?
Sorry, I am done.
Okay. All right, Lauren.
I just, I second the arboretum, you know, the importance of that bike path, but I also wanted to put an emphasis and a plugin for also our east-west bike path connection there. You know, through the east bookend, there's a path and then two blocks east of the bookend, sorry, along the farmer's ditch. So running through the middle of the east bookend, yes. But then it's, there's some discontinuity as it goes past what was the roller rink there. And so if it's possible, it would be great to have that included as part of what we're thinking about, how we make that transportation connection there, because I think that's an important one.
Yes, and that's a great note as well. We are going to be looking highly at circulation, especially at connecting circulation, making sure that it gets people to where they're going. But we know that there is disconnection and a little in continuity there. So thank you for that comment.
That was it.
Well, it looks like that's it for the hand. So we can go on to the next section. Very exciting. We're on time. We're doing well.
Real quick, before we start this next section, I did see there are, as you've noticed how complicated and multidisciplinary this project is, there are a lot of city staff listening in. And I have, we have some information on the parking garage from our floodplain manager, Edward Stafford and PNDS and parking garages are, the regulations would not prohibit them in some areas, as long as it's not in those high hazard areas. It can be technically difficult to sign floodproofing and very expensive. There are groundwater concerns and it can have ecological impacts. And so it was considered and evaluated in previous planning efforts and discarded due to the complexity and the cost.
Thanks for the detailed answer, Edward. Appreciate it. It's good to know.
All right, are we ready to move on to engagement? Let's go. Okay, so our overall plan, you can see this was highlighted before in the schedule. But just really quickly to note here, so again, as we move through planning analysis, our first engagement window is coming up fast. So in 2024, around February, March, we're going to open the first window. And that will really be sharing the foundation of information. And so I'll speak to that a little bit later, but that is one of our key steps in the first engagement window is to just inform on, here's the park planning process, here's what to look forward to in the future. So giving access to the community on the timeline and when they can touch back with us, when they can look forward to the collaboration. We're going to again, get those existing park perceptions from the community and then ask them, what do they think about future park activation? So really consulting on those two perceptions and then what they want to see in their future park space. Window two, we'll just come back to the community and we'll affirm what we hear, but we'll also give opportunity, we'll start to bubble diagram and think about some of the states and go through a little bit of the first alternatives, if you will. When we talk about programming and just get feedback and make sure that we've confirmed some of these things that we've heard from the public before we move into window three and that schematic design option. So schematic design, there'll be alternatives that we'll look at with the public, but really starting to draw out space and think about what kind of activities happen where and how many people can join events or in what area and where it gardens layout. So we'll get into that detail with alternatives in schematic design. And then coming back in window four, we will, we will inform on the preferred schematic design and then just get any updated feedback from preferred. Preferred might even adjust a little bit after what we hear from window four. So you can see then moving on to window five, between four and five, we'll have heads down for the design team and they'll really try and work through a lot of technical detail to get to a construction plan. And then we'll kick off construction with window five. Let everybody know periodically, here's how construction's going. Here's a new structure that has been erected. Just quick updates for the community like that. And then we'll really be back with a grand opening and ribbon cutting for that park space. And again, as we go through space activation, it will be thinking about how that park lives and breathes af- after that opening. So I'll just note here too, the asterix is when we go back to council and boards. So we'll be informing or doing some kind of touch point or some kind of meeting with the boards to review all the pertinent information, the data collection that we got back, especially in schematic design. We'll definitely have council and the boards review schematic design alternatives and the final plan for further refinement. So this is sort of the outline of the process of engagement and where we're going. And that was definitely overlay above as noted in the project design process. And we'll be working closely with the design team throughout that. So this is what I mentioned before on the strategic engagement framework. We're here at step five or excuse me, step three. We've created a public engagement plan. So our public engagement plan has gone through several levels of review right now. We've just completed a review with the downtown coordination team, so the planning team and will once we've kind of solidified that, we'll raise it up to the higher level and make sure that our coordination or excuse me, our communications and engagement team at the citywide level will review everything. So we're almost through it. We're about ready to open window one, which will be our step four, sharing a foundation of information inquiry. And so as mentioned, engagement window is coming up pretty soon here. And I just wanted to note that we're here at council study session. We'll have a month opening with a stakeholder open house, stakeholder meeting and public open house. Throughout that month, we will also have a youth engagement piece. So currently right now, we're going to be working with CU and a design studio to help us reimagine and envision some of our spaces throughout civic area. We'll also be working with Growing Up Boulder throughout the process. We'll have multiple special events, so pop-ups and opportunities to work with other programs to get broader outreach throughout engagement. And then we'll do an online questionnaire, an interactive map throughout those, those bullet points will be throughout the full window. And then just to note here that we'll be coming back to council around April. We'll need some time to synthesize the data, figure out what our top priorities are, key lessons learned, and then be sharing that back out with you all. And so this is part of our equity instrument and our work that we'll be doing with communication and the engagement department. And so thinking about that broad set of group and the diverse voice that we're trying to reach, the historically excluded groups. So we have, this is not only the list, this is a draft list and there will be more to add on here. Access considerations, again, draft list that there'll be more to add on here as well. But really trying to make sure that we are accessible, we'll be working with two community connectors. Right now, the downtown group is soliciting for hire to community connectors that will be present on all downtown projects. And so they will be consistent throughout multiple projects across downtown, including civic area. And so we will also be working with them. They'll be advising us on just strategies on how to move forward with the engagement process, strategies on outreach, some of these access considerations they will be adding to. And so we're really trying to be thoughtful and inclusive with this process. This is the list of stakeholders that we have and a board and council. This is what I had mentioned was smaller and harder to read. So definitely we have a lot of people to include and coordinate in the process, but this is going to be a key amenity. It's at the center of downtown. It will serve all people of Boulder. And so we're really trying to work to make sure that we are inclusive of every stakeholder, board that's applicable and community members certainly. So we're at the questions here for any input on our public engagement and it will kick off and begin in spring of 2024.
Okay, I'm going to take it from here, right, Shahomi?
Yes, please. Thank you, Tara.
Does council have input on public engagement that will begin in the spring of 2024? Taisha, did I see your hand by any chance? Yeah, okay, great.
I was just trying to share the air on that one. I like to give a pause and then put my hand up. So alas, thank you so much. Okay, so while I was on the campaign trail, one of the things that really inspired me to run was I felt like our city was really strong and informing and consulting. But there were real rich growth opportunities to move us towards collaborate and cooperate. And those are the categories that are listed in our Boulder Community Outreach Framework or Community Engagement Framework. And just for everyone's information, collaborate means to partner with the public in each aspect of the decision, including the development of alternatives and identification of a preferred solution, incorporating their advice and recommendations. And so you know, one thing, one piece of input I would have is how can we move from, how can we move to towards that collaboration and cooperation side of the house? So there's a lot of in inform and consult and really, really interested in how we can move earlier and throughout the process. And then on that note around engagement, it's great to have a list of partners, but again, I would be curious to know the level of engagement and the types of engagement that they're working on. So you know, again, equity is really about power and who gets to make decisions. And so it's really important to know the level of engagement. Not just who is engaged. And then based on the city's previous engagement efforts, what revisions have been made to the engagement plan to inform this effort to strengthen our engagement. So I would just be kind of be curious as from a continuous improvement perspective, what changes have been made based on the feedback from previous engagements? And then lastly, does the city mean inclusive and diver- or what does the city mean by inclusive and diverse? So again, just being as explicit as we can. And then, sorry, I did have just one last one around. It was wonderful to see the engagement of boards and commissions. Curious if, how we can make sure that they're getting it through iterative process and not just kind of one time to, to say something and provide feedback. And then in addition, I didn't see how the Boulder Police Oversight Panel was going to be engaged in this effort. I think the conversation and topic of safety had been raised and one of the authorities of that panel is to inform policy. And so again, this is, I think, an opportunity to be more proactive with that engage, with the engagement of that panel as well. So thank you so much. And I look forward to any comments or responses to those questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll jump in and then Ally definitely follow up if you have anything to add. So I think you're right, Councilwoman Adams. I think there's a wonderful opportunity here to ramp up into our engagement categories. And I do want to say that absolutely opportunity for collaboration always with engagement. And then we have to also just recognize that we balance, you know, any of the technical studies, all of the flood mitigation, transportation studies, we will definitely balance those two, but absolutely opportunity and growth here for collaboration, especially as we think about the safety and also the space activation components of it. I'm just really thinking about how people want to utilize their park. What do they want to be doing in their park? So definitely opportunity there. We do have the Boulder Police Department in one of our extended groups, but you're absolutely right that the board in this situation would want to also be included in the process, especially considering our large safety challenges that we have across the area.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't get any response to the question about the partnership engagement framework and the types of partnerships and engagement that they have, not just a list.
Sure, yes. And I will say that we are actually working through our logistics planning yet and it is in draft form. And so we'll have to get back to you on the level of partnership per partner that we have listed out.
Yeah, and I'll just chime in that these are a lot of really great comments and we can follow up on some of them either individually or in our next touch with city council. One of the things I want to just mention, the civic area plan from One of the things I want to just mention, the civic area plan from 2015 specifically for the city's various boards calls out where and how they'll be engaged specifically. So some of the stakeholders are the various boards. And then similarly, the plan calls out the, the types of engagement, but the engagement framework didn't exist. So I do think one of the things we can take away from this, that anytime we talk to the community partners or stakeholders, we want to make sure we're clear in our promise to them. I love the way the engagement framework said that frames that. It's not just, hey, we're consulting you, it's here's what we're going to do with your information. And so on that, the challenge with that, that highest level of collaboration is that in an area that is limited by floodplain and so many other constraints, we can't make that promise to the community. And so we don't want to be disingenuous in the engagement because there are limitations. We have to balance the community's input with the technical analysis and the policy guidance. But it is a key, key thread that we will weave into. And the key here also is reflecting back, hey, I heard you. I was going to try and give an example, but that's never a good idea. You know, I heard you, you want this thing. You want a trampoline park in the middle of North Boulder Park. That's a lovely idea. Here's why that's not safe, right? Not a great example, that could be a fun thing. But sometimes that collaboration, that collaboration level of engagement is simply limited by, you know, legal ramifications or others. But we're certainly going to try and we can be more clear about how and when.
Right, thank you so much. And again, I want to also just chime up that we live in the city of Boulder where our citizens include literal world experts. And so when we say community engagement, we're not talking about just one set of, of knowledge base, but a variety of knowledge base. And so I just want to honor that we really, when we say community, it's not, people don't, you know, we can't make assumptions, but really honoring the knowledge base that they bring. And I also wanted to clarify that collaborate does not mean the community gets everything that they ask for. And it, it actually says explicitly that, you know, when the solutions aren't aligned, then the city or can, you know, just share the, the rationales of why. So to your point, that is actually a part of that section. But it's more so the capacity to have the conversation that things aren't already baked when things come to community. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Taysha, and now we have Nicole.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had a couple of comments on the engagement piece. I appreciate all of the people who were listed as being engaged. I would just appreciate kind of a particular emphasis on some of these groups that we know there are going to be more of in 10 or 20 years. So for example, people over 65 correlated, but not exactly the same, people with disabilities. And then, you know, more folks who are more racially ethnically diverse immigrants. So basically, you know, who, who are we building this for, I think, is, is the question that I would like to have in mind as we're approaching engagement. Because what we're going to have in 20 years in terms of demographics is not what we have now. And how are we kind of preparing a space that's going to be inclusive of what, what future residents, visitors, workers, businesses are and students are needing? And then I think some just kind of groups that I would like to see additionally to what was listed is staff. So, you know, we talked about including some of the businesses, but the workers who are in the businesses, our own city staff who are working in the areas downtown in the, you know, library staff, since library staff will soon be library district staff instead of city staff. Basically, all the, the other kinds of people who are down there during the day, because I do see people out, you know, taking a walk at lunch, for example, as they're, as they're working. And then also in thinking about talking with folks who are experiencing homelessness, people have lived experience with homelessness. This to me feels like an important additional group beyond SAMPs. So some of the other service providers in the community, I would really love to hear what they are saying as well. And, you know, the one that I think is, is sort of missing that I would have liked to see, but I think it's probably too late to get something started with this or some of the open space and mountain parks has been doing a lot of work with our, the indigenous communities, people who have historical ties to, historical and current ties to these lands. And it's a group that I, I think I would have liked to engage, but I'm not sure the timeline here is right for actually doing the kind of meaningful engagement that would strengthen our relationships there. That just, just sort of wanted to notice that. And then in terms of, you know, when we're doing the engagement to Councilwoman Adams' point, really being clear and upfront about, you know, what it is that we're going to be doing. I think, like you said, Ally is a really important component of this. And sharing some of the constraints that we're working with upfront, so that people who are engaging know what's in the, the world of possibility. And, and then I think to Councilwoman Adams' point, again, just doing some follow up after the engagement and really including that is, you know, here's, here's where we're going and, you know, here is why or why we didn't use the feedback that you gave us. That to me also just to build some of those relationships that we want to continue building to get good engagement. So I know that was a lot, I don't need responses, you were asking for comments, so those are comments. Thank you. Great, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to Matt.
Thanks, Tara. So I want to, I want to build on the, on that, that dialogue, a little bit of back and forth between Taysha and Ally. Because I thought it was a meaningful one, and we'll be talking about committees here in a little bit, and there are two vacancies for outreach and engagement. So I'm seeing this out into the ether of my council colleagues, whomever's on outreach and engagement. I think this is maybe a project that, that outreach and engagement committee can sink its teeth into. Because one of the things I think we've all heard and we all know very clearly about it is people aren't feeling heard, and our answer to that is to do more engagement, and people are now less satisfied with the outcomes. That shouldn't be the case. And so clearly, we're missing something and our community is missing something, all parties are. And so I think this is an opportunity for us to treat it, and I think as Ally said, that this is maybe a different project from like, say, the core arterial network. That was a policy decision that we set, we said we're doing this. The community conversation isn't should we or shouldn't we? It was here's what we're doing and we're going to inform you how it's going to happen. That's, that's some of the engagement we do. This is different in the sense of it's a bit more of a ground floor conversation. And so I think there's an opportunity to learn about the community, about how does, how do people feel heard, even if a decision doesn't ultimately go the way they want? And that's the level of dissatisfaction that I hear in our community, that I think this project can help us understand better and deliver better outcomes. And so I'm hopeful the engagement committee can help sort of work with, with, with Ally, her team and every, all the other departments on this and get to that kind of core understanding, because that will be transformative on all projects we do in the future, is really getting to the core. Because at the end of the day, it's the quality of the engagement, not the quantity of the engagement that really is going to get us where we need to go. So I'd love to see that engagement committee really, really maybe sink their teeth into this being a way to study some new engagement techniques or more surveys and understanding what are those outcomes? And how do we modify ourselves to really get people to feel heard, even though the outcome may not go the way they want? And that I think is going to get us where we ultimately need to go across the whole slew of projects.
Thank you, Matt and Tina.
Yeah, just kind of similar to what Matt said, but from a different angle is, I think we did some engagement when we did the, the creek revitalization and the park next to the library. And I would be curious to understand how the engagement we did for that phase one part of the civic park, what the outcomes were. Did we see the people we expected to see using it? Did we see utilization at the rate that we had anticipated based on that engagement? And were there any gaps? So when we reached out through the different processes and to the different communities and through Growing Up Boulder, did it become the, you know, was it in fact the right response? And what could be done better to make sure we're getting people to the area so that we're serving them and meeting their needs? So that's one question I have. And, and then the other question would be, the civic area, it has a lot of beautiful places and the creek is beautiful. And there's a beautiful amphitheater. I would also ask the question, what are your barriers today to going there? Why aren't you using it even in the form that it's in? And, and exploring that a little bit to make sure that we are understanding the access and, you know, any kind of access challenges and barriers to using that space now? Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you for that. And I will say just a, a quick note on previous engagement. We did a really robust engagement process. We had a lot of feedback. We are calling through some of that between the youth engagement and previous stakeholder meetings and open houses and just trying to start from a level of not zero, right? And I think we're going to get hopefully a lot of answers and we'll incorporate those comments and questions that you have for the engagement process of really in the park improvements that we have. What has worked? Did we accomplish the goals that we set out to? And the problem is, is we did open the park improvements and we had a couple of good years where we had these beautiful park improvements. And then we had COVID and a lot of market swings and changes. And so in some ways, we are starting from a lot of previous engagement data. And in other ways, we're also trying to make sure that because of all of the changes we've now gone through in the world, that we're getting the appropriate feedback in today. And also to Councilwoman Spears' comment, also in the future, looking forward and how our population, community and wants are going to change.
Okay, that's great. Anybody else? Well, then we can move on to the summation.
Great. Mark, do you want to take our next steps and what council can look forward to?
I'd be happy to, and thank you, Shehomi. And just a very brief summary of next steps. One of our main goals is to incorporate the excellent feedback and insightful information we got tonight to better inform the project. So we'll be doing that over the next couple of months. And our actual engagement with the community will be in February and March. And then with the council, we'll be looking to come back with the findings from that community engagement in April and May. And then you can see from then on in, we'll be just going through the steps. Shehomi had touched on earlier regarding listening to what we'd heard, moving into concept, moving to schematic design, and then obviously hopefully moving into construction and opening and the space activation there on in. And, and with that, that is really just us closing out unless there's any comments on next steps. But I would just take a moment to thank Shehomi tonight, our senior landscape architect for the presentation. She has been a great asset to our organization, having joined 12 months ago. And I just really appreciate this being a first presentation to council tonight. What a great job she did.
Great job. Well, thank you so much. We are going to then move on to our next item. Let me just find my notes.
Tara, what? While you find your notes, this is Taysha chiming in. Remember the question that I've said, oh, if not for this section, it's another one, then I promptly forgot to ask it. I don't need a response, but just really wanted to emphasize the climate team. And just really curious how the climate team can, you know, curious the rationale for not allowing, having the climate team be a part of the core group. And if they're not a part of the core group, what is the way to ensure that there are synergies across the climate work and the other piece? Thank you.
We have the climate team in our extended and expert team to support us. And we, as we move through and get through design, we'll definitely pull them in a lot more regularly. But through planning and analysis, we were going to move with more of the technical studies, including those applicable departments. And then when we get into design and thinking about future forward and facing, we were going to pull in climate initiatives.
Okay, now I found my notes. Our next, so we're good with that. It was a great time, thanks, everybody. Our next item is a discussion on council committee appointments for next year. I am going to ask Mayor Brockett to help us run through the process. Erin, do you mind asking current committee members about the time commitments for each of these committees, as well as what day of the week, time of day? The meetings usually fall on, that way council members will have as much information as possible when making these committee decisions. Carl Castillo will be sharing the different committee assignments on screen, so we can keep track of who is interested in what committee. Thanks, Carl, and take it away, Erin.
Hey, Tara, thanks for that. Appreciate the, the handoff. And so I think what we're going to do is have the list of committees up on the screen. And we'll just go through each one quickly. And if an existing member who's on that committee can just give the briefest of descriptions of the kind of rough time commitment, hours and times. And then we'll just ask folks to raise their virtual hands if they're interested in being on the committee. And, and it's fine if there are more people interested and there are spots, you know, you can register your interest. We have a quick, a very quick discussion now, and we can also can have discussions offline. And hopefully get to the point where we have a, a list of assignments that we can approve at next Thursday's meeting. So Carl, it sounds, sounds like you're running this. If you could get those lists up there, that would be very helpful.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I am trying to share the screen right now, we'll get that up momentarily.
Thanks. If it's a committee for which everybody has rotated off, I'll just ask the staff member to give that quick discussion.
Okay, are people able to see that?
Can you make it bigger, Carl? And then we can just key into the, the ones and just scroll down. There you go.
Okay.
Okay, so thanks for that. So we're going to start with the Boulder County Consortium of Cities. Lauren, you want to talk about that?
Sure, so this is a regional group consisting of electeds from basically all of the municipalities in Boulder County, plus a couple extras. And we, at the beginning of every year, sort of set the topics and agenda for the rest of the year. It is on the first Wednesday of the month, two hours in the evening, in person, but with a virtual option.
Thanks, Lauren. And also note that when names are highlighted in red, that's somebody who is no longer on council. So there's a definite opening, but people are not guaranteed to stay on their exact committees either. So who is interested in this one?
I would be interested in continuing. This is the organization through which I started sort of the minimum way, regional minimum wage working group. And, and as that is not finished, I would be really interested in continuing with this group and that effort.
Anybody else? All right, Lauren, it looks like you may have this one again.
Erin, can we verify if there's an alternate, that that alternate is still interested as well, just so that we, if there's a desire to fill that or not?
Great point. Alternate.
Yes, sir, I'd love to be the alternate again.
Okay, anybody else, maybe? All right, seen none? Okay, very good. How about the CML Policy Committee? Maybe, Matt, I'll turn to you since you're, you're chair of that committee.
Uh, yeah, I appreciate that. So CML is one of the most implemental committees or certainly policy groups that, that affects towards state legislation. And they represent cities across the entire state. And Boulder's lucky enough to have two votes and two seats, and that is scaled based on population. So the larger the city, the more seats and votes they get. We meet during the, just before and during the legislative session for the state legislature. And then we don't meet very much at all. So really, once the legislature ends in the May timeframe, we're not meeting, but up until then, we meet every month. So we first started meeting in October, we meet November, December, January, February, March, April, May, June, or May, and then we're taking time off. So it's one meeting a month on a Friday. I'll say that Carl Castillo and his team and our policymakers do a great job preparing us and going through the prospective policies and applying what we also learn and discuss at the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. And those are very synergistic in what council decides is what they support. And then that's what the folks at CML go to CML and advocate for. We don't advocate for ourselves, we advocate based on what council has said is our policy direction on a number of these things with support of staff.
And those, thanks for that, Matt. And those meetings, where are they? When are they? How long are they?
A good question. They are once a month, they are hybrid. But if you go in person, they are on, they are in Denver at the CML office. And they are, we're chairing the, chairing the committee. I would say I'd like them to be just two and a half hours. I guess it's on me to make sure it is, but, but it will leak a little further, depending on how busy the legislative session is and how chaotic it is, which seems to be kind of the status quo these days. So they're a bit longer.
Thanks for that. And who is interested in this one? We got two spots.
Well, if I may speak, I have not been an active member of this committee for the last year.
I have not been an active member of this committee for the last year due to reasons of health. And so I am going to surrender that seat and let somebody else take that opportunity.
Okay, very good. Thanks for your service. Looks like we have takers. Matt is interested in continuing and Ryan and Tina are both interested in joining. So what I might suggest is having a couple one-on-one conversations offline to, to see how we whittle that down to two people.
And I'll just, I'll just mention on that, if I could. As the chair of the policy committee, it would be really, I would be weird to be removed or to not stay on maintaining that role on CML through this legislative session. So I would, I would certainly like to stay on to maintain that role until the next legislative session, certainly. And then there's a new chair, but for continuity sake, I would appreciate that.
All right, good. Thanks, Ryan and Tina, for your willingness to step up. Okay, the famous infamous Dr. Cog. Nicole, you wanna talk about that?
Sure. Yep, so Denver Regional Council of Governments, kind of the regional planning agency for, for the Denver metro region. We oversee a lot of transportation funding that comes in allocated across the metro region. And they are also funneling funds for the, for a lot of aging related work too, which doesn't impact us as much because we have our own area on aging here in Boulder County. The meetings are twice a month, just for sort of the basic meetings. One is a virtual study session first Wednesday of the month, about two hours long, though some of the spicier discussions can go longer. And that is on the first Wednesday. On the third Wednesday, we have in-person meetings downtown Denver. Those again can go from kind of two to three hours. There are some other committees that you can get involved in. I'm on the Performance and Engagement Committee as well as the Nominating Committee for this, this next year. The packets can be a little bit on the longer side depending on the topic and especially during the legislative session. And you're typically meeting with transportation staff at least once, possibly twice during the month as well in order to get prepped for the meeting and talk, talk through some issues. I would really like to stay on. Dr. Cog, I think is one of those organizations where having continuity is very helpful. Feel like after two years here, I'm finally starting to understand it a bit. It makes some of the connections that can help me be a good advocate for the city. So I, I would, I would like to stay there. For the alternate, I think there were two meetings in the last two years since I got put on Dr. Cog that I was not able to get to that Junie went down for. So anyway, that's the Dr. Cog overview.
Appreciate it. Interest here, we, Nicole's interested in continuing. We do need an alternate, but an interest from folks in participating here.
Can I ask a quick question? Could, could we add the time of day that the meetings are as well?
Yeah, I think those meetings were four PM on a Wednesday and six thirty PM on a Wednesday.
I'll just, then I'll mention for CML, they are usually nine AM till about eleven thirty AM or noon on Fridays.
Hey, so not seeing any hands. We do need an alternate here. Nicole has been to almost every meeting, so this is relatively light lift. But also a good way to dip your toe in the water of regional transportation and planning issues.
If nobody else wants to do it, I'll do it.
Wow, all right. Thank you.
Thanks, Tara. Appreciate it. It's nice to have a backup.
Okay, very good. And thanks, Nicole, on this. This is probably the biggest commitment of any of these assignments. So appreciate your dedication on that. Metro Mayor's Caucus, this is the regional mayors of the Denver region getting together every two months to talk about regional planning issues. Can't open this one up to other people unfortunately because it does require the mayor. In case you're wondering, the meetings are seven thirty AM in Denver on a Wednesday. And I'm actually missing the holiday reception right now. It's happening at this very moment. So moving on, we have the Resource Conservation Advisory Board, Lauren.
So the Resource Conservation Advisory Board is on the third Wednesday, two hours, starting at four thirty. I have noticed that there aren't a lot of other electeds from the other communities because we are allowed to have a staff person, I believe, as our vote. And I think that that would make sense. Jamie does, Jamie Harkins does attend in my absence. And if it was acceptable to other people, I would like to move us in that direction.
I think that makes sense unless there's somebody who's really interested in participating personally. If somebody is, then.
When are the meetings again? And how often do they meet? This is about waste, though, right? Waste diversion?
Yes, it is. It, you know, over the past two years, has been a lot about the changes in recycling capabilities and compost capabilities.
Okay, then I would definitely be interested in serving. And I see Tara's hand up as well.
Old, old hand, I think, for Tara.
Sorry, that's the only, you have to go so hard on this. You could have just been like, nah, that was last time. We have significant issues with our compost and just waste in general, so I would be very much be interested in serving.
Okay, well, well, good. If you're, if you're up for it, Taysha, then Lauren, thanks for your service and we'll have Taysha take over. Now we have Rocky Flats. Tara, tell, tell us about Rocky Flats.
Hi, Rocky, no. It's, I can't remember if it's Friday morning or Monday morning or both or, and it's not that often. I should have studied this ahead of time, no? It is about, I don't know, two to three hours. And there is also a staff alter, alternate. So if I couldn't make it, then the staff would always be there. And sometimes one of the staff couldn't make it, so I was there. But it is not a heavy lift and it's also a virtual. It's, it's mostly virtual. Every so often, it is, they have a meeting that's in person.
Very good. Who might be interested in this one? And Taysha?
Yeah, especially since it doesn't meet very often. And most importantly, it's dealing with contamination, which as you all know, there's other contamination issues in our city. So if, if there are other people that are interested, I'm happy to have a conversation about it as well. There are certainly some other committees that I'm very much interested in being a part of. But again, I do think it's, especially if it's not a heavy lift, I'm happy to do it.
Well, and Tara, you didn't want to continue, is that right?
I didn't. Thank you so much, Taysha.
Okay, Northwest Mayor and Commissioner Coalition, this is another one that needs to be the mayor. But we meet monthly to talk about regional transportation issues primarily with the mayors of Boulder and Brimfield Counties and the Boulder County Representative. We just had a meeting yesterday morning there at eight AM on Wednesdays. So I'll, I'll keep at that, if folks don't mind. And then commuting solutions. Matt, you wanna talk about this?
I'm sure. Commuting solutions meets, doesn't meet that often. I think we're only meeting maybe every, well, there's different levels of meetings. There's larger gatherings and then there's some smaller ones. Usually staff is involved on the smaller scale. It's the bigger meetings that Rachel and I would attend. For instance, I think January ninth is the legislative breakfast, and so that would be a bigger one to attend. It's not a very big lift at all. This is mostly just an informational gathering group. I think, you know, the heavy lift comes from the more specific stuff that's done at Dr. Cog or, you know, one, you know, one nineteen or Colorado seven, those smaller ones. So it's mostly for us just sort of gathering the, the groups and the network and having conversations. I mean, at the legislative breakfast, we're gonna hear from Jared Polis, we're gonna hear from Faith Winter, so we hear from a lot of folks about what's happening. So it's mostly informational, not a huge lift. But you do have to meet in mornings about every other month for sort of the bigger meetings. And they are in the mornings. So other than that, not, not a heavy lift and not a whole lot of work to be done from a council perspective, more just showing up and being a representative.
All right, who's interested in this one? By the way, I'm happy to give up my, my spot. I know that there's a spot open because of Rachel's departure, but I'm happy to give mine up too as well. Ryan?
I'm interested, but I also don't wanna hog transportation things and I'd be delighted if others wanna do this too. So it's interesting, but. Let us see other hands, too.
Okay, and any other takers? Tina? Okay, so yeah, got Tina and Ryan both interested and we have a member and an alternate, so maybe the two of you could talk. Well, maybe we'll see how some of the rest of the discussions go and figure out who's, who's a member and who's an alternate. And, and then I'll, I'll mention just that while we're talking about it, the January ninth, the legislative breakfast, everyone is invited to that and it is in Boulder this year. So I encourage you to attend if you're interested.
It's at the Glen Miller Ballroom on CU's campus specifically.
Exactly. Okay, Mile High Flood District.
Can we, cannot, can Ryan interrupt for one second?
Yeah.
What was that?
Yeah, okay, so Tara and I had a, an offline thing. I'll take Dr. Cog from Tara, Tara, she's offered it to me, so. If that's suitable.
Sure, Tara, if that's all right with you? Okay, so we'll go back and put Ryan as alternate for Dr. Cog. Great. Mark, can you tell about Mile High Flood District?
Certainly. Mile High Flood District actually is a most interesting assignment. It, as an organization, they fund a great many flood mitigation projects in, in the larger Denver area, of which we get a piece of that as well. However, the, the assignment is limited to mayors and mayor pro tems. So this would be something for either Aaron or Nicole. The, the only, it's not a terribly heavy lift. The only inconvenience is that the meetings, which are once a month, take place on the same day as council meetings. So you could, there is always a, a virtual option. But if you want to go down in person, which I, I recommend, you, you meet a great number of, of the other mayors and council members around the, the, the region. You know, it becomes a little less easy in light of the fact that you're going to a council meeting later that day. But it's, again, the assignment is limited to Mayor Brockett or Mayor Pro Tem Spear.
Smart. And Nicole, I'm happy to defer to you on this one. It's, it's a, I've done it once myself. It's a great group and I encourage you to go if you're up for it.
Yep, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do it. Thankfully, as an extrovert, doing two meetings in a day is not the worst thing in the world. So, but yeah, thank you for that heads up, Mark. I will make sure to give myself some rest in between.
Excellent. Thanks for that, Nicole. State Highway one nineteen, I'll, I'll talk about this. This is a group that meets as needed to kind of guide the redevelopment of one nineteen. It's often quarterly, sometimes less frequently. And it's a kind of a slow-moving process based on transportation. I am interested in continuing on this. I've been involved with this quarter for a long time and I'd love to continue seeing it along in its development. But open to hearing from other folks who might be interested as well. And Matt's currently our alternate as well. So, and anybody else interested in this one?
I'm sorry, which one are we on? I can only see a part of the screen and I'm trying to toggle with mine.
It's the State Highway one nineteen coalition.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Seeing no hands or, but Matt, are you up for continuing as alternate?
Absolutely. You've never missed a meeting, so it's about the easiest lift imaginable for an alternate.
You know, I may be sick someday, so, great, thanks, everybody.
Oh, I could only be so lucky to attend to one. But we love your dedication. That's why you're our mayor, because you, you are, you are infallible on making those meetings.
On this one, I miss an occasional one, but thank you. State Highway seven coalition, Tara?
I don't need to keep it. I'm happy to give it up and it was great fun. It was always, I was always virtual, except we did have one field trip, which was also a lot of fun. And you work with great staff. So I'm, I'm trying to remember the meetings. I believe they're in the morning virtually for like two hours, once a month. Or every other month. Maybe somebody from staff remembers. I'm totally not prepared for this. I apologize.
Anybody interested in this one?
Come on, people.
I, I'm interested, but not, not committed, so if others.
Yeah, and Nicole?
I just wanted to say, I mean, Tara hasn't missed a meeting, so I haven't needed to be an alternate. I'm happy to give up my alternate spot as well.
Okay, well, we got one person standing at this point, which is Ryan.
I'm happy to bring in, come in for alternate.
No, I was gonna do that.
Oh, Tara, sorry. Whoops, my bad. Get in there, Tara. Get in there.
I'll be alternate.
Okay, well, if you all wanna re-talk about that, Taysha and Tara, offline, feel free, but thanks.
Wait, no, I'm kidding. It doesn't matter if I'm alternate or not.
I'm serious. I would, I would like to step down because there's other things, but if there was nobody, you know, so thank you, Tara.
Okay, sure.
Good. Audit Committee, Mark?
Well, the Audit Committee is an interesting assignment. It's not a heavy lift. You meet two or three times a year. And you mostly listen to our staff present the results of the, of the audit. And it's reviewed by our outside consultants and uniformly the audit reports are clean. And just first rate and fantastic. So you kind of, you just kind of sit there and, and, you know, and bask in the presentations. It, it's really not a very heavy lift. I can't say it's the most, it's an audit, so I can't say it's the most fascinating assignment you can have. But it is always a pleasure to see how well our government performs in terms of its record-keeping and, and following proper audit procedures. So again, it's, I think it's worthwhile. It's always nice to experience how things can go right. And our finance staff has made them go right every year that I've been on that committee. I'm happy to continue and, but if somebody wants to take my place, I'm also prepared to defer.
Right, who might be interested in this one? Taysha?
But I had the impression that it was two people. Is it a per, one and an alternative or is it two folks only?
It's two people.
Okay, so then yes.
So we do need another person. So if you're up for it, that'd be fantastic.
Well, Mark said he would be willing to continue on, didn't he?
Yes, he did.
He did. So we need, we need Mark plus one other. So Taysha, if you're up for it, that'd be fantastic. Fantastic, all right. Good. Boards and Commissions Committee, Lauren or Tara, you wanna talk about that?
Go ahead, Lauren.
Aw, thank you, Tara. So we, two years ago, we overhauled, to some extent, the boards and commissions process. We're still going through sort of the assess, working with staff on overhauling other aspects of the boards and commissions. It, but we don't meet regularly. It's, we meet on an as-needed basis.
Thanks.
I would say that I enjoy doing it and would be happy to stay on.
You know. Let us stay on, please.
You're both still interested? That great. Anybody else who wants to throw their hat in the ring for this one?
I don't, but is there, but I am interested. So could I be like, you know, put me in coach if you need me kind of thing? I don't know. I don't need to be assigned or appointed, but like just know that this is an area of interest and I'd be happy to serve as a thought partner whenever, whenever needed. Thank you.
That's great. Okay, Sharon Lauren, thank you. Charter and Elections Committee, Matt?
Um, yeah, so it, it is what it sounds like. We meet early in the spring and we discuss any potential changes that, to the charter, which have to go to the voters. And any other sort of election reform or modifications or tweaks accordingly that, that need to go on. And so it's the Charter and Elections Committee that proposes ballot measures to the rest of council, usually in the May timeframe. And then, and then at that point, it's elevated. And then, and then at that point, it's elevated to a larger council conversation with support of staff and particularly the city attorney's office. So really the Charter and Elections Committee does most of its heavy lifting, kind of starting right in the new year till about May, and then it's kind of done because then we're off and running. Oh, I see Teresa's hand up as well. So I maybe will stop talking in case she wants to correct me, which is quite likely.
Apologies. I wouldn't call it a correction. Let's call it a clarification. It's the Charter Committee. Um, it's not there. Uh, it's, elections is not part of the official title of it.
Thanks for clarifying, but it's helpful to understand. But Matt, thanks for the explanation. Who might be interested in this one?
I, I look on staying on. I, I mean, I'd like to stay on. So there's that.
Okay.
I, I have never tried this committee. And so I'd be interested in working with Matt on it if if no one else wants to, to take it on.
And I've also got Lauren and Tina who are interested. So lots of great interest in this one. So maybe we put a sticky on this one to, to come back to, or you all can talk offline about who might go forward on this one.
No, not me.
That was Lauren and.
Aaron, could there be more than one, more than two on this one? Or does it have to be two?
So for, for generally all of our boards, we prefer for them to be two, but we can up that to three or four. If council takes a formal action with an explanation for why additional numbers would be necessary. So that is, that is a potential if, if every, everybody is very interested in this. Okay, great. Thanks.
Mayor, can you clarify then who are the ones who are interested in this committee?
So Benjamin Wallach, Marquis and Folkerts. Marquis, sorry. Sorry, Tina, I've said your name several times.
Marquis.
Marquis.
You usually do a great job.
Yeah. I'll, I'll get back to it. All right. Council Retreat Committee, Nicole or Lauren?
Lauren, do you want to talk about it? Because I have to talk about the Council Employee Evaluation Committee.
Sure. I can talk about the Retreat Committee. So it is largely what it sounds like. We designed the retreat for city council and sort of structure that with feedback from the rest of council. I was thinking, so me and Nicole both joined this at the same time and as new council members, I think that was a little bit tricky. I was thinking about stepping off of this in hopes that someone new might take it up so that we could have staggered appointments to this committee so that we're not ever starting with sort of all new folks again.
So new or someone who was just appointed to a three-year term?
Yes.
And I'm very happy to stay on this one.
Okay. Thanks Nicole. And thanks for the explanation, Lauren. And I, I will mention it is helpful to have, to pair council members with more and less experience on some of these internal boards to kind of create a bench and continuity. Mark?
Aaron, I, I just want to go back to the Charter Committee. If it is possible to have three members, I'm happy to defer to Tina and Lauren and give them a shot at it.
Okay. Thanks for that, Mark. We'll, we'll come back to that a little later, but that makes that more, makes that easier. Appreciate it. For the Retreat Committee, Nicole's interested in continuing, Lauren not so much. Any of the newer folks or anybody else?
I'm happy to do it if none of the new folks want to do it. I always like a good party and to pick the good food.
Tina, you're up for it?
I'm, I'm open to it. I don't have to do it, but I think that the idea of doing staggered is, is probably a good idea. But Tara would be staggered too. So, because we're the same at this point. So Tara, I'm going to defer to you.
I don't care. I'll defer to you.
Tara, if it matters, staff picks the food. We don't.
So. Well, we'll, me and Tina, Tina and I will talk offline. How's that?
Well, you both do a staggeringly good job. So all right. Thanks for that. Council Employee Evaluation Committee, Nicole?
Yes. So this committee, we are primarily, now that we've got our new schedule set up, mostly going to be doing the bulk of the work, probably like July through October. The rest of the year, it's pretty quiet, but the, well, sorry, June, June through October. That is a more intense time just because we are working to get the surveys ready that go out to our count, our three council employees, city attorney, city manager and the municipal judge. And then kind of trying to solicit feedback from everybody, processing all the feedback that everybody gives and putting it into neat little packages that we then present to you all in council as well as to our employees and having feedback sessions with employees. I really like this committee. I am very happy to stay on. I think as we were just talking about with the Retreat Committee, this is one where it's really going to make sense of somebody on it who's done it for a couple of years because Junie and I both came in not having been on this committee before. And it was a, a little bit bumpy. So it would be really nice if we had one of the people who was just appointed to a three-year term, who could be the other person on this committee. I'm very happy to stay on and just kind of maintain some knowledge flow and transfer as we move into this next council.
Thanks Nicole. Volunteers for, for this very important board. Tina? Ryan? Great. So you're both interested. I much appreciated. This is an important, important role here. So maybe we can, this is one where come back to it a little later and you, you all can maybe talk to each other a little bit. Appreciate having a new person on would be, would be good. And thanks Nicole for your continued work on this. Intergovernmental Affairs, maybe I'll just describe this since I have the floor and just to clarify, Rachel rotated off the IGA a little while back. Tara's been on it. So Intergovernmental Affairs meets as needed during the legislative session and occasionally outside of legislative session to make recommendations on policy positions the city should take. We generally follow the, our policy guidelines that have already been adopted. And when something is really outside of those, we'll bring it to the whole council for consideration. So it's a in, interesting stuff to follow along with the legislature. But definitely a little time consuming during, during the legislative session. We meet monthly or a little less during the session and meetings last one to two hours, generally in the afternoons during the week. Uh, so yeah, currently we got me and Tara and Matt and Lauren on this. And so we can see who's interested out. I'll just mention, I'm, I'm interested in participating because of synergies with some of my other regional roles. But happy to, to see who else is interested as well.
Same. I'm, I'm, it's the same thing with synergy with CML. So I'd like to stay on.
That's, it's not guaranteed, but I'll just throw the, so Taysha?
I'm interested in staying on as well.
Okay. Tina? As well. Tara, would, did you want to continue on this?
Well, I'm happy to give it over, but remembering that we put me on in the first place to give some balance to the fact that we wanted the entire community represented from all angles politically. So I will, where do you think we should go from here, Aaron?
But let me hear from Teresa first.
But Mayor, I just wanted to call your attention to the fact that Taysha Adams has her hand raised.
Already noted and she's listed and she's being interested. Thanks for that. Thanks for that, Teresa. Mark?
I, I'd be interested from the perspective of balance. I've served on the committee before. And it would be on that basis that I would re-up for it.
Okay. So Mark also interested.
Withdrawn.
Who was that?
That's Taysha.
Oh, okay.
Well represented. How many people that are interested and I am more than happy to. So thank you.
Okay. That's generous of you. Thank you.
And I'm going to say to give others an opportunity, Tina and Mark, you can discuss among yourselves and I will withdraw and let you guys figure it out.
Very good. Okay. Now we're down to just five. So maybe Mark can see him. It doesn't, and somebody else could leave too, but it's the, maybe you all can chat amongst yourselves and we can also dial back with others afterwards.
Rather, rather than pistols at dawn, Tina, you may take a shot at it.
Pistols at dawn.
But no, no.
Thank you, Mark.
For committee assignments, but thanks for that, Mark. That was gracious of you. Teresa, did you have something else? Please then.
I, I do. Thank you. I did want to at this time just remind the council that if we have any more than two appointments on any council committee, then we will need a written basis for those additional appointments.
Understood. And we've done that for this board before and it should be, potentially should be doable again.
Aaron?
Yes.
I don't, I don't want to muck things up by raising my virtual hand, although I'm not interested in this one. But I, I'm just wondering, kind of like we did during the last legislative session, we anticipate that we'll have council discussions as well, like full council discussions about some of the bigger issues or the things that aren't really, you know, immediately obvious from our legislative policies. So I just want to, I, I guess it's, it's more a clarification than a question, just an expectation that we'll all be weighing in on any of the more controversial ballot measures and things like that.
Absolutely. Particularly those that are not fully addressed by our policy statement. Yeah. Thanks for that, Nicole. Uh, Mark and Teresa, do you, or do you have hands up? Okay. Just want to make sure I didn't miss something. Okay. Financial Strategy Committee, Nicole or Mark, willing to talk about this one?
Uh, thi- this is actually a reasonably rigorous lift. You know, it involves analyzing the budget, working with financial staff in terms of how they want to present it to council. Now, you need to understand there were no decisions made at the, at the level of this committee, but we will often advise staff if they're, if we think we're heading, they're heading in a good direction or bad direction or the presentation needs to be spruced up in some fashion or, or, or taken in a, in a different light. It does involve quite a bit of financial analysis and reading. And if you're up for that, I think it can be a very rewarding assignment. Uh, and would, would urge people to do it, but you, you need to do it in the in, you need to do it knowing that, that, that it's going to involve a bit of work.
And when, when were the meetings?
The meetings are generally monthly. And occasionally on an as needed basis, I think, but, but mostly on a monthly basis and they, they last for about an hour and a half.
And we had adjusted the times based on the, the folks who were on the committee last time as well as staff schedules. And I just want to emphasize, you know, the point that it's not, it's not like we are determining the financial strategy or anything like that. I see us more as the, we are getting kind of the pilot presentation of what comes to council. And so we're really providing feedback on framing and you know, are graphs clear? That, that sort of thing, how we can have productive discussions, less about the, you know, are, are we on the right financial track or anything like that? So it's almost more, I don't know, administrative or just a sounding, a sounding board, I guess, before coming to council for the real discussion.
Yeah, we're not, we're not telling staff you need 10 more people in parks. That's, that's not our job.
Although Ali would appreciate it if you did say that, I'm sure. But, uh, okay. Who, who might be interested in this one? Ryan, I got Nicole. Mark, did you want to continue?
Yes, my term goes till next year and I'd like to continue.
Great. We got Ryan interested. Anybody else? One's going twice. Okay. Ryan, thanks for stepping up. And this is another one. We're having a newer person on. It's helpful. So thanks. Thanks for volunteering. Okay. Community Engagement. Oh, sorry, Tina?
Yeah. Could you take my name off the Council Retreat Committee?
Okay.
Thanks. Tara will do that.
All right. Thanks for, for that, for that. Okay. And then let's not lose Nicole for financial strategies that deleted, I think. Okay. Community Engagements, Rachel and Bob are both off. So Sarah, perhaps you could give a brief description of this?
Sure. I'm happy to. Good evening, council. This is Sarah Huntley, Director of Communication and Engagement. This is another one where I think the title is a little bit not quite correct here. This should be the Council Engagement Committee. And this is a committee that was formed actually in the midst of COVID or right around COVID. And it is really designed to talk about ways to improve council interactions with community, both in terms of chats and walks and other activities outside of council meetings, as well as improving the experience for engagement during council meetings. This group is the cadence for 2024 will be meeting monthly for about 90 minutes a month. But we also are proposing to roll in the Better Public Meetings project, which an ad hoc committee had been working on. This is a pilot partnership we have with National Civic League to try some innovative things during council meetings. And so there may be some one-off meetings related specifically to that project, particularly in the first part of the year.
Great. Thank you for that. And so anybody on here will, it'll be an all new group who's interested. I got Matt's hand up.
Yeah. And I'm, and I'm on that ad hoc. And so I'd like to, for continuity sake, roll over to this so that I can maintain that work. This is what I went to DC to speak on with National Civic League and National League of Cities.
Okay. I got Tara and also Taysha. Very good. Thanks everyone for your interest. So maybe this could be an offline discussion. Check in with each other based on how other boards assignments go. Great. Thanks for all of your willingness to serve. Okay. Moving on to local board member appointments. And if I can, yeah, so we just got a few left here. So quick descriptions of our external boards. Bimoka, Matt?
Uh, yes. So Bimoka meets about once, I think we, yeah, we meet probably every other month. And we've been changing our schedule around and it's been, well, it, this is a crazy time for Bimoka because of its current plans to move and move into a much bigger facility in North Boulder, in the North Boulder Arts District. So I, hard to say that the meeting cadence that we have now and the amount of lift that's now is going to be what it is carrying forward. But certainly for the next planning phase, year, year and a half, it's going to be a much heavier lift because we're not just dealing with Bimoka's regular business, but there's all the construction, the plans, the architecture stuff and the work being done to consider moving to North Boulder. So it is kind of a little road of a roller coaster in terms of the, the amount of work needed. But the meetings are usually in the mornings at Bimoka and they tend to be, I believe on a Wednesday and sometimes on Thursday, depending on need. And it's a great group of people to work with. I would like to stay on just for some continuity sake, but if, if there's people really driving and, and really want it, certainly open to that as well. But, but I think it's a great group to people to work with in an exciting time. Uh, because they'll be, be moving into a, hopefully a, a new big space in the North Boulder Arts District.
Thanks for that, Matt. Um, any other interest in, in this one?
I want to give the Council Engagement Committee to Taysha.
All right. Done.
Yeah, we are rapid. Um, okay. Well, let's, let's see how it all shakes out at the end, but thank you. And I just said that because I really thought in the handout, it said Community Engagement Committee, but on the table it says Council Engagement Committee. Just wanted to.
I think it's, I think it's really specifically about how council engages with the committee.
Oh, I understand that. I'm just making a point that initially I got very excited because I thought it was really about revisiting how we engage with community, how we're updating the framework and making sure it's implemented with fidelity. And again, there would be a intersect, I would imagine with the council relationship as well. But I am less, I'm less excited if it's only, if the scope is so small.
And we apologize for that, that mistake in the column. As the, the committee itself is the Council Engagement Committee. Sorry.
Right. So you want me to do a Taysha?
Yeah. I mean, I, I just, I Yeah, I mean, I I just, I just, and I guess this also raises a larger issue, which is um, you know. How often do we revisit the boards and commission and, you know, the committees that we're on? I mean, and are there other things that we need to be on? This is something else that happened in Colorado Parks and Wildlife. We had the same structure that was from however many decades ago. But there were a ton of other places that we needed to be, but there wasn't a place where we had a conversation about, hey, are there other places that we need to be represented? And those kinds of things. Are there opportunities to consolidate so that there aren't so many? Um you know, I'm just kind of curious about that. Is this something that we talk about during the retreat? Thank you, sorry to um ask some clarifying questions.
No, those those are great questions, Taysha. And and yes, so I I think if we wanna look at at it structurally, the retreat would be the time to do that. Um that's that's a great time to to look at that. We we look at membership annually. Uh but in terms of the structure and how that could be improved, uh you know, combined or more or fewer, uh retreat is a great time to bring that up.
Thank you.
Thank you. And what what was the result there? Taysha, did did you then decide you did not wanna be on the Council Engagement Committee, or are you still interested despite the the lower scope? No.
I'm not interested.
All right.
All right, and and can we say it's really good stuff that we do, and Sarah's team, we did some amazing work.
Moving on, we're moving on.
I'm saying, it's it's good stuff.
We're moving on, we're moving on. Um okay, Bimoka, um and any other interest in this one? Uh seeing none, I I think Matt, it's still yours. Thanks for your willingness. Uh Tara, you've got a hand up.
Oh, sorry.
No worries. Okay, Boulder Convention and Visitor Bureau Board, um Tarek, can you address this one?
Well, I only went to one meeting as the alternate, and there were good snacks. Um it is. I saw it, but I don't actually remember, so maybe somebody else knows. We discussed uh what it's, you know, marketing and stuff like that.
I mean, I guess I can talk a little bit about it. Um but this is Visit Boulder, right? It's our convention and visitor bureau, our tourist board. Uh it does have a council representative and an alternate. A lot of us just went to their lunch. Uh it's it's a lovely group. Um that is dedicated to uh improving visitation to Boulder, and because they're um hospitality oriented, they do have good snacks. But as for the, I think it's monthly in the morning.
Yeah, monthly, yeah.
Yeah, monthly in the morning.
I don't know that it's in the morning. I went in the afternoon.
Okay, not sure about that. All right, I got I got Taysha, I got Tina, I got Lauren. Very cool. So uh this could be another one, good one to colloquially offline.
You could take me off.
Okay, thanks, Tara. And so we see how other things go. Thanks, everybody, for your willingness. Okay, so we'll leave that in uh limbo for the moment. Uh Dairy Arts, Lauren.
Yeah, so similar to the Museum of Boulder, that you're serving on the board of the Dairy Arts Center. I'm currently on this, and the big thing that we're working on right now is renegotiating the lease with the city. I am happy to stay on, and I I do feel like I'm helpful in that role, but I'm, if someone really wanted it, I'm also open to that.
Very good, thanks, Lauren. Other interest in this one? Uh Taysha, is that your hand for that one? No. Okay. Anybody else for this one? Mark? Uh you're muted.
I'm happy to do it, but only if Lauren does not wish to.
Okay, Lauren, it sounds like Lauren has some interest in continuing, but. Okay, okay, very good. Uh next, we have the Downtown Business Improvement District Board. Uh this is Mark and Matt. Currently, Mark, while you have the floor, do you wanna um talk about what this is?
Yeah, this this is basically interacting with our downtown business community. Um it meets uh on a monthly basis, usually for about an hour and a half. Um dealing with issues affecting the mall. Uh it's a good group of people. It's a it's a good organization. Um and uh. Uh I I think it's it's, you know, it's a worthy group. This is one I would be interested in staying on. And uh. You know, I think it's worthwhile.
And when uh are the meetings and how long?
The meetings are um.
Thursdays.
Thursday, Thursday mornings um at about nine o'clock. Um so it's also. A double meeting day with with council. Um but uh the the lift is not that heavy. All all things considered.
And is that a monthly meeting?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Great. Uh other interest in this one, I see uh we got Taysha, no, Taysha, yes, yes, Taysha, uh Tara, Matt. And Mark. So we got, we got lots of interest in this one. I just met their new director this afternoon, Batina Swiger. Uh she seems like a really great new leader for that organization, so whoever's on that will, I think, be working with a a great new director there.
I could also be the alternate. If you want one.
Um I think we have two mains, but I I guess maybe I'll ask Theresa or somebody here. If we have two positions on this, I don't think we've had an alternate, but could we, could we have an alternate?
You know, Mayor, I'd be happy to look at that and get back to you. Uh I suspect that it is defined by um. The uh by the Boulder Improvement District. Uh forgive me, the the governing documents. Either way, put my name in and we'll all discuss.
Okay. Very good, so you all can talk amongst yourselves.
Aaron, did I get the four people that are interested, correct?
I believe so, yes. Taysha, Tara, Mark, Matt. Uh okay, then next, Boulder Housing Partners. Uh by the way, this is by statute a mayoral appointment, but we always do this by consent of council in general. Uh Boulder Housing Partners, Mark, you're the current representative, you give us a quick explanation.
This this one is a a pretty intense lift. Um uh the subject matter is fairly technical in terms of the. Uh tax credit programs that they access. Um and the, just learning the terminology is. Is 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 an interesting process. They meet once a month. Um for board meetings on Wednesday and once a month for um. Finance Committee and Development Committee meetings uh on a Monday at three to five. Um and there's usually a fair bit of of uh dialogue that goes on outside of the uh. Uh of the meetings. Um uh this is one I would very much like to continue on. Um they have uh about a thousand units in the pipeline. I'd like to be able to uh. Uh help shepherd that through, and so this would be a um. A committee I would very much like to serve on.
Okay, thanks for that, Mark. Uh anybody else? And Taysha, is your hand up? Okay, but Lauren, Lauren, you're interested as well?
Yeah, I am interested as well. Um but I know there's been like three things that I've been interested in that Mark has. Taken his name off of. But for the record, I was interested in it last time as well, and so maybe if I run for reelection, we'll. Maybe we'll keep that in mind.
That's that's gracious of you, Lauren, thank you. Uh and thanks, Mark, for agreeing to continue. It is a heavy lift and uh but I know you're diligent in this role, so thanks for that. Um okay, Colorado Shetland Taco Association, Tara.
Yep, I actually wanna stay on this one. It's fun. It's close to my house. I'm close to the people. I care about your taco.
And the meetings are when and?
Oh, yeah, right. They are Monday night, once a month, and from five thirty to eight.
Uh anybody else? Anybody else interested in this one? Seeing no takers, Tara, thank you for your continued dedication to that role. For the sister cities, what I might suggest is, so we've got four openings, because uh Bob had two. We have three new council members. So rather than go one by one, I just wonder if new council members might mention if there's one of these four that they would be interested in in. Being the representative for, the liaison, rather, the liaison. So. Uh Ryan, and then Taysha?
I'm interested in Tajikistan.
Good, uh Taysha?
Palestine.
Okay, how about you, Tina?
Lhasa or Yatiras.
Well, you could have mine. What do you, you want Kenya? Is that it?
No, no, I'm fine with either. I'm I'm pretty good with anything.
Um okay, Lhasa or Cuba. So now, thank you, that's great that all three of you had an interest there. Now, uh we do need one person to be a liaison for two ci- cities, and that could be an existing council member or a new council member. Uh so Tina, do you wanna do both of them, or do you wanna just do one of them and let somebody else take the other one?
Well, let's let's talk about that. Why don't you take me off of um Cuba and maybe just open that one up? I guess I'll stick with Tibet. Or I'll I'll do Cuba, I don't know.
I'm gonna say, I'll take Cuba.
If you want, why don't you take Cuba then?
I'm happy, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Taysha.
Sounds like a game of Risk, that's odd.
It sounds like the Berlin whatever. Like we are literally, but but more so from furthering international relations, so trying to mitigate, I appreciate that.
That didn't, that didn't sound very good.
Oh, it's terrible. So I'm very, very grateful that, um but in all seriousness, my master's is in international education, and so. I take these opportunities very, very seriously, and I'm actually hopeful and looking forward to opportunities to have deeper conversations around what that relationship is. And how we can continue to strengthen it. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Taysha. Um is is everyone comfortable with where this stands? The rest of us continue with our existing sister cities? Okay, great. Thanks for that, everybody, and almost done, if we can scroll down. Oh, we are done, okay.
We are done.
The one, the one thing that we didn't actually talk about, though, is the National League of Cities uh that was on our previous list. And I'll just mention, the the great thing about National League of Cities is that all nine of us can participate if we want to. It's not like you're appointed to, so if you're interested, put your name out there and we'll put you down as uh as interested. Uh but this can be as many people as 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 are interested. So I got Taysha.
What's it called, Aaron? What is the time commitment?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Um so the National League of Cities, it's, there's no minimum time commitment. But they have um committee meetings uh virtually on a regular basis, if you're interested in any of the committees. There's an annual conference in March in Washington that I've always wanted to go to but never have, and I understand it's really uh interesting, great networking. Great opportunity to learn a lot of things to bring back to to Boulder. Um so it's it's really you engage as much as you would like to, and um the previous people who've done that have been Bob and Junie. And I I think the rest of us, I don't know if the rest of us have gone to the conferences um before, but but I hear they're great. Uh okay, I got I got Taysha, Mark, Nicole, Tina, Matt, Tara, Lauren. And and you can put me down too. I'd I'd love to get more involved with them also.
Oh, it's weird, because we were talking about cutting that travel budget, so here we go.
Okay, don't need to bring that up.
And if if I may say, the um the meeting in March uh is really quite fascinating. I recommend, I recommend it highly um to anyone who wants to to go. The the last one I attended was the week that everything shut down with COVID. And I was able to get back here just ahead of the the plague. Um everything shut down around the twentieth, and and this was a couple of days before when I got back. But the 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 substance of the meetings themselves, I thought, were really, really quite interesting, and um. I urged at least once that everybody go and and take advantage of it.
Great. Okay, um did anybody wanna, a- anybody else have anything else to say on this? What I'm thinking is that Carl can send out uh these notes, and so we can have, see who's gotten what assignments, and also which ones still are oversubscribed. And we can start some offline conversations, and I'm ha- happy to um have some of those with people as well. Um so I think those would be the next steps, but any uh final thoughts before we wrap up this one? So Tina, you just raised your hand.
Yeah, certainly, I I know I'm I'm a, I'm a very scheduling-focused person. Could we put the times and dates that each of these commitments are, so we make sure there's no overlap?
Can we also just, how many, see how many each person has to make sure they are um. What's the word?
That balanced and equitable.
Balance, thanks, yeah.
Taysha, did you have your hand up for this?
Sorry, for this discussion, or I think it might be from before, from just wanting, raising my hand for the man, sorry.
Okay, very good. Well, I think we can, we can get that from um the list, you know, when the list of who's on what and who's potential for what. We can all count up and see how things are going. By my informal sense of it, I think we're, you know, reasonably equitable distribution. Unless only one person gets all the ones that are contested. Um so if they go. Get decently distributed for the ones that are oversubscribed, I think we'll probably be okay. Carl?
Yeah, uh I just wanted to follow up on your comment about the National League of Cities. As you said. Um any and all council members can attend the annual meeting. As far as the committees, though, that's not something that the councils make assignments to. Maybe a council member needs to apply for. We've had as much as four different council members uh serve on different committees of different topics. And I'll just mention that if you'd like any support and and learning more about that, or in applying for a committee, please do reach out to me.
Right, and Carl, do you think maybe you could, since there's broad interest, do you think you could send some info out to the whole council about how those committee assignments work? And and how we could get more involved in this?
Absolutely.
Thanks, right, thanks so much. Nurya?
Yeah, I was just gonna put, as long as Carl's um uh on, I just wanna put him on the spot and wonder to um. To the question about whether or not we can put some times, and we can look at it as we follow up with you on a clean version of where we stand, Carl. I'm hoping we can do that some, so that people can figure out scheduling and get that out um soon. So just wanna tag that for in response to the question. If that's good with you.
Yep, absolutely.
You're great, thank you.
Taysha?
Yeah, um I did have just a general question about knowledge management, and so I think um Councilwoman Spear mentioned. Um you know, having people that there are some, there will be opportunities for the whole council to be engaged around specific topics. That are relevant, but I did raise another question that I had about just where is information around these different committees housed? Do, does the whole council have access to those folders if we wanted to look at past presentation or materials that are provided? Um and also, you know, I noticed, for example, at the last meeting, there was a attachment with some of the meeting notes. From the Environmental Advisory Committee uh group or board, rather. And uh I was curious if um if I can anticipate something similar for when uh fellow council members. Uh go to these different um committees and and uh councils as far as um bringing back. Um the presentations and materials in a timely manner. Thank you.
All right, Nurya, do you wanna address maybe how we approach these things?
Sure, um and certainly open to um how council frankly uh uh does it on their own. But traditionally, you will see, um if we have done engagement, if we have gone to a board or commission, you will see that generally attached to the agenda packet. Um so uh below, we report out on all our meetings, whether or not it's an item or not. For these meetings, I think that's a, that's an interesting question. Not all meetings carry an agenda, not all meetings have presentation. I don't believe, and staff or mayor, can correct me if I'm wrong, that we have not created kind of an informal library of what that looks like. Um and there may be different legal reasons for uh some of that, although that's not a. It's not a meeting of people, just a sharing of information, and that might be an interesting thing to create a kind of. Council library as you're going out to conferences or doing some other things to have a place to share that with. And so we can happily take that back and work on something of that nature. But not every committee um has meetings which require um that take notes or um have presentations to them.
So much, I really appreciate that. At Colorado Parks and Wildlife, we had similar types of assignments, and there was very little knowledge management. Or meaningful cross-integration of that information, and so really excited about the opportunity. To um make sure that we can strengthen knowledge management. Thank you.
Absolutely. I I'm, I um was remiss in saying too that there are times when council as part of CAC and the ju- agenda. Ask committee to come forward to bring information, so that happens publicly in a meeting, and we schedule that through CAC. In a meeting and we schedule that through CAC as well. So there are other avenues in which to pre- present that knowledge transfer. When particular decisions need to be made by the whole council.
Awesome, thank you. And similarly, if information that is gathered is relevant to the boards and commissions, making sure that that gets that way. And so again, I guess that's where that staff role is, is there to make sure then, as we're bringing things back. To the council that also that information is being shared with staff.
That is accurate.
Okay. Great points, uh, Mark?
Um, can we, uh, all receive a copy of the chart? Uh, so that we know who we have to talk to and where we may have oversubscribed and take a look at our own assignments and and go. You know, I've got twelve assignments, I can't do that, and and to look at it, uh, uh, in the cold light of day.
Yeah, yes, uh, M- Mark, uh, so yeah, I think that's, that's what I've been, I've been asked to do. Tomorrow I will send, um, a list to all of you of what you signed up for. I will have highlighted those groups that are oversubscribed. And and by that, I'm just defining that as meaning more members than it previously had, because as Theresa had mentioned. Two is the maximum unless council has made an argument to go beyond it. So I will just assume that the current number is what we may want to keep it at. And and then I will also let, if anybody has signed up for a, um. A group that conflicts with the time of another one, I will call that to your attention. I'm thinking that may be the best way. I guess finally, uh, Attachment A, and I'll, I'll send that as well, does include, I believe, the times of each meetings. So hopefully between all that information, you'll all have what you need to, uh, make your final decisions.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Welcome.
Very good. Thanks so much, Carl. Really appreciate you helping us through this and continuing to do so. Uh, any last thoughts? Uh, seeing none, Tara, I will hand it back over to you to conclude the meeting.
Well, with no other items on tonight's agenda, I will close this, close this meeting at eight forty-nine PM.
This is becoming a terrific habit. The under-three-hour meeting, I mean, I'm, I'm on vacation.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Great job, Tara, thanks.